We're waiting. People are signing in late, so that's why we're waiting. Actually, I'll tell them to come up. They can... Hey, Linda. Linda. Linda, you can let them know that they'll get a chance to... whether they sign or not, they'll get a chance to talk.
Oh, yeah.
All right. All right. Well, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. All right. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order of Northampton County Council. I know people are signing a sheet. You can keep signing if you want. You'll get a chance to talk either way. If we do the pledge, Mr. Dietz, would you lead us?
I'll lead it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Ms. Embow, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mr. Dietz.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. La.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Fargo-Heckner is out. Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present except Mrs. Fargo-Heckner.
Yeah, and she's involved in a religious activity. All right, so call for approval of minutes from April 4th. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
I'll second.
And Zirinsky, second. Call back the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Very well. Let's go to confirmation of appointments. Appointments. Mr. McGee, would you please introduce your resolution?
Resolved by Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment or reappointment as indicated hereafter. Area Agency on Aging... Area Agency on Aging. Appointment, Robert Prunzek, term to expire July 2nd, 2021. Alcohol Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, an appointment for Francis Gallagher, term to expire June 30th, 2021. Farmland Preservation Board, a reappointment for Farmer Director, Todd Gulick, term to expire June 30th, 2022. Public Director, Andrew Theory, term to expire also on June 30th, 2022. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, appointment, Citizen Representative, Dr. Christopher Amato, term to expire December 31st, 2021. Mental Health Early Intervention and Developmental Program Advisory Board, appointment, John Timothy Boyer, term to expire January 23rd, 2022. And Workforce Board, Lehigh Valley, appointment, Stephen Patterson, term to expire June 30th, 2020. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Are any of those individuals mentioned for these boards here? Would they like to be recognized? I don't know. Sometimes people come. All right, if not, very well. Any discussion? Seeing none, will call for the vote?
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Heckner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to seven... I mean, nine to zero.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to have courtesy of the floor. And let me just get myself set here. I'm going to read the folks that are here. We have a list. We have a fairly long meeting tonight, so I'm gonna ask you to please... We're gonna try and limit the comments to five minutes for each individual in fairness to everybody. So the first one I have is Deb Hunter. Now, Ms. Hunter wants to come up, and you would state your name again for the record.
Yeah, I'm Deb Hunter. I live at 901 Frosthalla Road. Hey, hey, hey. Lots of familiar faces up here. Good to see you all. I'm here to address the council with regards to this procurement that I assume you're gonna be voting on tonight for $2.9 million for the ESS XL system. Sure. Thought I was. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm here about the $2.9 million procurement for the ESS XL system. As some of you may know, I'm the vice chair for the Election Commission, and I was one of the two dissenting votes to recommend this system. And I'm here to give you just some of my reasons why. First of all, you need to know that August of last year, which was, let's see, that was my first year on the commission, as was, you know, for several of the other members. In August of last year, the ESS XL system was brought in to the building across the street that used to be the registration building, and it was presented to us, and I think council members even went into sentence, said, "Here we go. Here's what we're recommending." That was not our recommendation. I'd never seen the thing before, didn't know what the other options were, et cetera. It was brought in. This was a recommendation by administration, voter registration. There it was. So you need to know they've been fighting for this machine since then. You also need to know that at that time, it was not certified by the state as of that time. Also, prices. Prices were not indicated for many of the voting systems at that time. So, you know, that was also not taken into consideration at that time. Let's see. I'm gonna focus on cost and efficiency of these voting systems as well as the concerns of the judges of election, because that was also something that's being taken into consideration. With regard to prices and what we've been presented with, first of all, you need to know that the paper system, that ESNS with their ballot marking, small ballot marking devices, we were never given... the county, as far as I know, never asked for it. It was never presented to us as any kind of an estimate. So that was not even considered. That's what Lehigh County's going with. All we saw was the XL from ESS. The comparison that we got to clear ballot, I have to clarify a couple of things. The original quote from clear ballot that was given was $1.9 million, initial purchase price. They also offered a $455,000 discount, which would then take it down to approximately $1.5 million, initial purchase price. Since then, as was at our March 6th meeting, there's also a reduction in... please correct me if I'm wrong. I think it was about $345,000 for whatever system we selected, correct? The state is giving those monies, correct?
They were giving us monies on both, and it was never...
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, it's gonna be taken off the price. So that would basically bring down the purchase price, initial purchase price of the clear ballot machines to $1.2 million. Okay. You're voting on a $2.9 million contract tonight. And that, by the way, that proposal was given in December 19th of last year to administration. Another issue that was brought up at that meeting was why Lehigh County. And I'm also going to read here just a couple, because I was accused of being anecdotal and hearsay at the meeting on March 6th, partly because I was... didn't have time to make up a professional presentation, because I, as a commission member, was not informed until two days before the meeting that there was going to be another special meeting afterwards, and that perhaps it might be up for a vote. So I have here several interviews. Myself and my fellow commission member, Kathy Fox, we took it upon ourselves to interview personally the directors of elections of all of the third-class counties to see where they were. Okay?
But I mean, let me just say this. This isn't on you. If you wait, when we have our discussion, if a council member has a question for you, because you sit on the board, you may... they may want to ask you a question. You may have a chance to address that.
Okay. I'll try and...
But I just wanna move it for all the people.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand completely. Let me just read this. There was a concern, for example, Lehigh County, one of the reasons that they picked the paper ballot system with the 1B ballot marking device and for ADA compliance and the optical scanners, was because they were worried about HR1, if that actually does get passed. It was passed by the House, hasn't been brought up before the Senate. But they were worried about, for example, they may have to then purchase again machines. We were told at the meeting that they misunderstood that. Well, let me read to you. This is subtitle F, section A2, A1, Paper Ballot Requirement. "The voting system shall require the use of an individual durable voter-verified paper ballot of the voter's vote that shall be marked and made available for inspection and verification by the voter before the voter's vote is cast and counted, and which shall be counted by hand or read by an optical character recognition device or other counting device. For purpose of this subclause, the term 'individual durable voter-verified paper ballot' means a paper ballot marked by the voter by hand or by a paper ballot marked through the use of a non-tabulating ballot marking device or system, and the last is very important, so long as the voter shall have the option to mark his or her ballot by hand." Now, I'll call time on that. As far as reading my interviews with some of the boards of elections, which that gets into some of the concerns of our judges of elections, how these counties overcame problems with paper ballots, you know, some of the things that they're talking about, like how heavy are the ballot bags, privacy issues. These are counties... Lancaster County, they've been doing this for a long time, so I'll address those if you want me to later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have... sorry for that. Somehow I don't know how to turn that off. I have... and correct me if I make any mistakes. Roger Dreisbach-Williams? Hi, Roger. If you would come up and identify yourself for the record.
Councilman, my name is Roger Dreisbach-Williams. I reside at 25 Tumble Creek Road in the eastern portion of Williams Township. My concern is regarding the voting system that the county is about to acquire. My experience as a voter, I have missed one election in my entire voting life of more than 40 years. The vote system is a sacred duty of all citizens, and that means that when we go in to vote, that is a particular time to look at the ballot and make our final decisions and mark it. If we have a paper ballot and a private area that that can be marked, that vote will be able to... will speed up the process of voting, because the machine counting of that would only be a matter of entering it in, rather than having a voter spend the time to review the ballot before marking it. Having a paper ballot that the voter has marked and then put into a secure location would then allow a counting of those ballots after the election. We would have preliminary results from the scanner, but then would have an actual count of the actual ballots. This will then prevent and assure the voters that there has been no tampering with any of the software involved between the time that they submit the ballot and the time that the count... and when the count is announced. So we have a preliminary account based on the tabulation of all of the individual ballots, and then the voter, the elections officer, would be able to count all of the ballots and verify that the count for individuals is accurate. At the last election, I was in there for the entire voting at Williams Middle, and there's a... the count in the machine is noted and marked and corrected and measured against the number of votes that have been cast, but there is no indication as to which candidates were selected by the voter. So having a paper record of the selection of the voters is important to the integrity of the system, and my understanding is that the system that the county is proposing to adopt does not include that, and this would present a problem for the future. Thank you very much. Any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant. All right, next, we have Mr. Gene Hunter. Gene, if you could come up and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gene Hunter. I also live at 901 Frosthalla Road, Forks Township, Eastern Pennsylvania. And I am also concerned about the voting machines that are being considered to be purchased. The XL machines have a barcode on each and every ballot, and after the person has voted on each one of these machines, a new barcode is imprinted on it that has the information of how that voter has voted. Now, there's a problem in my mind with someone looking at a screen and selecting people that he's going to vote for, and then after that, having to look through a glass at a small... smaller representation of how he's voted, and not having that representation of how he's voted actually be the official part of the audit trail. And what I mean by that is, I've, for a long time, been in favor of a voter-verifiable paper audit trail. And if you go with the machines that seem to have been given predominance so far, they are going to enable a recount on the basis of these barcodes, and it would only be through some extraordinary measures that might be taken that we would have a hand recount of, okay, how many people actually voted for these people, and writing things down with paper and pencil, and, you know, it would be fairly reliably said that this would never happen, that they would just continue to use the barcode. So if somebody gets in there and they can do something to this barcode, that's it. It's just as bad as the machines that we have now. Once you hack a computer program, you could ask it a gazillion times for what was the result, and it'll continue to spit out the same erroneous result at you that it did the first time after it had been hacked. So that's my main concern about these things. Now, there's also a question of price. They're gonna be less expensive than the other machines, because we're not going to have to print out all of the ballots to 110% if we've got some kind of a device in each polling location that can print up extra ballots, then you can get by with printing less than that. So that was another part of the price consideration. So I think they would be less expensive. They would be better for people to come in and have all the time they said, as a previous gentleman said, you know, that you've got that at a station by yourself. You can scrutinize it. You can take your time and think about it. You're not holding anybody else up, because there'll be multiple stations for people to be going in there and marking these ballots, and then when it's time to put them into the tallying machine, that's gonna take about five seconds for each one to go through. So there's not gonna be no holdup with that point. So there's numerous reasons why these things are superior. But to me, the main reason is still that the gold standard, if you talk to many computer experts, including Professor Dan LaPresti, that was here last time, he said that, no, anything with a barcode is less secure and could more easily be hacked, and that's something that, as people representing this, I truly hope you're gonna put that foremost in your mind, that not only am I saving money, but I'm gonna have something that is gonna be more secure for the voters of Northampton County to have confidence in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grant. All right, now, let me see. I think the next person we have is Kathy Fox. You could come up and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Kathy Fox, and I live at 1513 Elm Street in the city of Bethlehem. First, I have some information that I'd like to pass to all the council members. As you may know, I am one of the two election commissioners who voted no to the ESNS Express Vote XL. I voted against it for many reasons, after doing my due diligence of researching and calling to other Pennsylvania third-class counties to speak with their directions of election. During my conversations with the other county election officials, I asked if specific problems that were brought up and anticipated by our poll workers were actual. Most problems were not true in the counties who use paper ballots. These are... examples of these are the weight of the paper and the security at the scanners. But the concerns I will speak to you about this evening is related to security of this machine. While I understand that many poll workers like this machine, because it is most similar to the Sequoia model we currently have, and therefore, adjustment to and training of these... on these will be easier, I do not think they extensively researched election security issues and read the studies. After a voter casts his vote on the XL, the voting machine translates and reads a barcode. These barcodes are what are counted for the vote tally, not a personally marked ballot. We will have to trust that the voter selection is exactly what the barcode says. Programming errors, malfunctions, and hacking could change what the voter selected, and we and they will never know. Even when a barcode reader is available, the barcodes are decoded to six-digit numbers, which can only have meaning to the voting machine. This is a serious flaw for recounts. The Blue Ribbon Commission on PA's election security does not recommend systems with barcodes or QR codes, as they are not human-readable. According to Professor Andy Apel of Princeton University, after a vote verified is verified through the glass and cast on an ENSS Express Vote XL machine, the ballot travels past the print head that marked the ballot again before it is tabulated. Either through programming errors, malfunctions, or hacking, the XL is capable of printing additional marks on the ballot after verification and before tabulation. This is a most serious flaw, and it could change election results and affect the audibility of the ballot. Ballots should not pass any marking device again before tabulation. I personally believe the next presidential election will have unprecedented number of voters, and there will be long lines of people waiting to vote. A hand-marked ballot system is the most secure with human viable ballots, easy tabulation for absentee ballots through a scanner. It gives the ability for more voters to be voting at the same time, reducing wait times during key prior-to-work and after-work times. Hand-marked ballots increase voter confidence, more reliably captures the voter's intent with shorter lines, because many people can vote at once, are resilient in the case of technical problems and power outages, take up less space to store, and cost less to first purchase. It is the preferred choice of election security experts. It has our duty as citizens to potentially... to protect our citizens... it is our duty to protect our citizens from potential threats of programming errors, technical malfunctions, and hacking, and therefore, we should secure a hand-marked ballot system. Thank you.
Thank you. What we're gonna do then is, since you're a member of the election commission, I said to Ms. Hunter, depending, you might wanna stay when we have the debate, not... there may be a question, maybe not. So I'm just saying that. All right, next, we have Sandy O'Brien. If you could come up and identify yourself, and I'll ask Mr. Warner not to be too hard on you.
Please, Bob. Hi, everybody. Sandy O'Brien, 705 Paxonosa Avenue, Eastern. I want to reiterate something, or maybe add to what Mr. Hunter said earlier about Professor LaPresti when he was here at the workshop, which I attended. I have been in county council chambers before, and the first thing he said was, "Barcode, no." That's the one thing that he recommended. There are a lot of other things to look for, but he said if it has a barcode, it's probably not going to be safe enough. Now, my question for you tonight is, do you all have your Palm Pilots here? You all have Palm Pilots in your pockets, purses? No, we're not using them anymore, because they had calibration problems, and that's what these machines have. When they are moved, they have a calibration problem. It's unknown until they're put in use. Now, in the 2016 election, I had many people contact me following the election, either online or by phone or in person, to tell me that. They made a choice, and after they pressed the button to say, "Yes, I'm voting that way," they saw the opposite name appear in the upper right-hand corner. Their vote was changed. Now, some of them knew enough to ask to have it reset, but a lot of people didn't. That's a calibration problem. You press the name you want, but because it's been moved and it's not working correctly, and nobody knows, it does it itself. It goes to another spot and chooses that. I don't think our citizens deserve that. I don't think we can afford to use a machine that does that in today's... today's problems, let's just say. So, paper ballots, faster, of course. You can have a lot of people voting. Like, all of you could be voting at one time instead of waiting. Another thing that wasn't mentioned that night was that with ESNS, if you make a mistake, you can have that redone, put another sheet of paper in, and vote again. You can do it a third time. But if you're a real goofball and you mess up a third time, you don't vote a fourth time. You've lost your vote. Yes, that wasn't mentioned that night, but I learned that when I was down at the building down on Wolf last summer, and I tried the ESNS machine. Maybe you were there that day. I think you were. So, three strikes and you're out. Most of us can probably get a vote done in that time, but there could be those who can't. Another thing about those machines is that research shows that people really don't research, and research rather shows that they don't really look at that little tube and find out if it's exactly what they had, and I can't really... I could not vouch for myself that I could remember that everything I voted for would be printed out on that. Now, that's worrisome also. So I would... we know the trend is toward paper ballots. We know that they may be mandated in a short time, and we might be spending another $3 million in a few short years. So I would ask council to please carefully consider your vote tonight. Paper ballots really are the way we need to go to save our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Next, we have... excuse me. Sometimes we're getting older. I have Leonard Martinelli. I probably butchered that beyond belief. I look... I'm trying to read it, and what is it then? If you'd come up and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Lorenzo Marinelli. I live at 3520 Corvina Road in Palmer.
Thank you.
I'm not a public speaker, but I am a data geek, and by that, I mean, I've worked in data for 20 years, collecting data and tabulating data. That is what voting machines do, right? In my world, personally, I've tabulated billions of data records, way longer than a vote tally, way longer. We would absolutely never use any system like this XL system. It's completely indirect, meaning it says it's paper, but the paper is the output after the machines interpreted everything. So you have all the beauty of electronic voting, and then a maybe fake, maybe wrong, maybe misprinted, maybe unreadable, paper ballot. They don't call it a paper ballot. They call it a summary. They call it a summary, because it doesn't contain all the information. So it's not a ballot. Barcodes, this and that, a lot of other people spoke about that. What can I add that's unique? Well, in my world of data collection, surveys and whatnot, we focus a lot on online touchscreens. The user interface is extremely important. One thing we would never do is try and lead anyone. We want clean data, right? So when you vote on these touchscreens, you can add colors and prompts and logos and things like that. All of that just adds to the bias. It doesn't mean that votes are really gonna be swayed one way or another, but just the perception of it, right? What this thing is, is a Rube Goldberg contraption, to pretend it's a paper ballot. Paper ballots, we all know, you know, the great things about them. They're portable, power outages, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All this is doing is adding points of failure on top of points of failure. In the research world, we know that on a touchscreen, people make mistakes. People never think they make mistakes. We know that people never verify anything. What you're asking for with these machines is to tell people, do everything the opposite way that's intuitive, and then rely on a barcode, which you cannot possibly interpret as your actual vote. as your actual vote. My understanding from the literature is maybe a little different. I'm not sure that the vote, that the machine ever actually scans the barcode anyway. It's a little bit, you know, unsure about that. But I always started looking at it this morning for two, you know, an hour and a half, two hours, and I find all of these different errors with the machine, right? If we were to just say, write on a paper ballot, hand it to anyone here, we'd be assured. We can go one step further, add scanning machines, we're assured. Frankly, I just, I see no reason why we would go with this. It's just going to be problem after problem. And as somebody in data, who again, I process billions of records myself, I develop software personally that I license to the second-largest research company in the world, a multi-billion-dollar conglomerate, I would be fired. I'd be laughed at, I would never work in data again if I suggested anything close to this machine. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Janice Hobbs Pellicio. You can come up and state your name then. You have five minutes, thank you.
And I married into that one, so, yeah. My name is Janice Hobbs Pellicio, Hobbs was my original name. Anyway, I'm a resident of Doylestown, but I am the president of an election integrity group in Bucks County. And our mission is to, well, we study all the latest expert opinions about the voting systems, this is all we do, and we share that information with officials and citizens because we want to educate them. Because I know this can be a real complicated topic. Most people don't intuitively understand what's going on, and it's very easy to get confused. And I know you're very busy, and a lot of you, I've gotten the impression, from what I've heard today and what I saw watching the video of the meeting last night, where the ESNS vendors showed you the one, the XL machine which is being discussed, it appears to me like most of you council members had never seen the machine before, let alone any of the others that were available. So, that has us concerned because you never were able to compare them and do your own research. I mean, you're going to be tasked with a very important decision for your constituents, and it just seems like this is kind of a rush to pick something that most of you don't even really understand. So, I guess as an election integrity person who really wants everyone, every voter in Pennsylvania to vote on a secure machine, and so we can have elections that can be properly audited, and we know that the election, we can be assured that the election results are accurate, I think everyone needs to do a little more work. I think it's, I think you need to step back and do your homework. We're here, anytime, you can contact me anytime, it looks, some people here have already done their homework, which is really good, so it's not just me. And I think a lot of the things that I was going to discuss when I came up here have been covered by some of the people that have come up here. But some of our, we have severe concerns about, particularly the XL, it seems to have features that are like the worst of everything. It was like, sorry to say, but it's like the worst machine you could have picked. A hand-marked paper ballot system is infinitely better, any of them, and ESNS couldn't offer that type of system. It looks like they didn't even show it to you. I don't know why, so that's another question that maybe you all need to ask, so.
Is there a system or that your group recommends?
We've done research on all of them, and we prefer the clear ballot system just because they have, well, number one, their ballots are print, don't have barcodes, and they are a newer company, but they come from an auditing perspective, and they have an amazing, but what I can tell, audit program to, and their scanners are top of the line. They're also seem to be very flexible for moving forward. You can upgrade easily because they basically use off-the-shelf scanners, they doctor them up a little bit, but basically, it's easy to upgrade. I was impressed with their representatives, they were able to answer our questions, and I, that's one we prefer. There are two vendors only that offer no barcodes on their ballots, and that Hart is the other company, so. But if you're not going to have, well, if you're not going to use what we call BMDs for all voting system, which is what you're getting, if you're just, every precinct has to have one BMD to, for the accessibility for disabled who can't hand mark. So, you need to buy at least one per precinct. You don't need to buy them for all the voters. Let all the rest of the voters hand mark their ballots. It's somewhat, you can set up, as we said, privacy booths, no lines, if there's a problem, you just go back, you know, if you overvote or undervote, the scanner will kick it back out to you, which is fine, that's a feature, that's not a flaw. And then you just go back to your privacy booth, and you get a new ballot, you know, the poll worker will give you a new ballot, and you do it. But if you had to, if you messed up at your voting machine, you're going to hold up that voting machine, you know, the BMD, if you're marked, you know, having it marked. So, that's not good either.
In respect to, we have, I appreciate it. We are going to be, obviously having a discussion and vote on this. First, we're having a budget amendment, but that isn't really approving this as much as putting money aside. The second phase of that is later in the meeting when we actually vote on the resolution to execute contract. So, you know, council will be taking care of and discussing probably both at times, but I just wanted to let you know.
I was just asking, I think everyone should just slow down a little bit and really think about that before you vote, you know, do a final vote. That's my opinion, and that's would be the opinion of election integrity activists, so.
Thank you.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
We have been, I mean, I don't know what you saw in the video, but we've been looking at this a lot. I mean, I pretty much got a comment here that I didn't look at it at all.
No, I said some, I said some of you might not have, that's what I was concerned about. I know some of you have, but I think there are some people that, it was the first time they saw it.
Sure, and one other question. How much of your, has your group been involved with the state process in the, in the, in the certifications?
We've attended the certification things. We spent many, many months last year going up to Harrisburg and actually educating legislators about this issue, and, and talking to Senator Fulmer and other senators about things for, to change the election code, we have to update it. It's, you know, from 1937, a lot of it, and they're working on some things, particularly about how many paper ballots would need to be printed. They're, they're making that go way down, and also because you have the ballot, one ballot marking device in every precinct, that also changes the whole equation. You don't need 110% of registered voters anymore. You can have, well, the, I don't know, I'm taking up the time, but.
Thank you, yeah, that's okay.
But you can ask us anything.
We will, and I just want to let people know, we're going to have our discussion in that for council members, and I know Mr., some of us were there, Mr. Cruz, because we have looked at machines in the past, and we'll get into that, but when we were at Gettysburg, I believe we reviewed the machines that were being offered, and since then, we've reviewed. So, but we will have, obviously have some discussion. All right, next I have, and I believe I know who it is, but I'm going to take a guess, Tara Stevenson?
Yeah.
It's good, it's good to know some people's names. That was throwing me a little bit when I first looked at it. Please, come on up and identify yourself.
Tara Stevenson, 132 Parsons Street in Easton, like seven minutes from here. I am heavily involved in every election in this county, in this city, like for the past 10 years, 11 years. I work really hard for free. I don't make a dime for what I do, and I expect my elected officials to work at least as hard as I do, and harder. And from the, from the stuff I've heard from here, from at least two experts, how a decision could have been made to go with a touchscreen thing as opposed to paper ballots is, how do people decide, oh, yeah, yeah, other boneheaded decisions that people could possibly make. I want to see due diligence for my tax dollars, and for as hard as I work, and for as deeply as I believe in democracy, or some people might consider republic more sacred, whichever one, whichever one you want, I don't care, we're a democratic republic, okay, or republican, whatever. I want to see you work as hard as I do. I want to see you work harder than I do. And I don't want the decision made tonight because there's just too many questions still remaining, there's too much discussion that has not happened. I don't want to, I kind of feel a little bit like I'm being hustled. Somebody's pushing this faster than it needs to go. It's not right. It is simply not right. And I would ask you to please slow down the process, listen to each other, and make an intelligent decision.
Thank you. Next, we have Jackie Lima.
Yeah, I really have nothing to say. I just was told to sign away. Thanks, Jackie.
Can you teach me how to do that with my colleagues? All right, next I have Justin Woodring. If you would come up and identify yourself, Justin.
I'm Justin Woodring from 2242 Ferry Street, Wilson Borough, and I'm just here because of learning about the new voting machines. One of the things that always bothered me with voting in the recent elections is the machines that we're currently using in Wilson Borough are kind of a black box. You push buttons, and the printout comes out at the end of the night. And we have an opportunity to replace that black box with something more transparent, and I'm fearful that those other machines, the XL, is not transparent because of the barcodes and that situation. And also, the machine may become obsolete in two years when HR1 passes, and if it passes, and then we'll have to spend $3 million, and need to spend more money in the future. So, I'm just concerned about those things, and other people have said a lot more, more eloquently than I have, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, on the, this is, that's the list. Is there anyone else on any topic who would like to address council? If you would come up, sir, and identify yourself.
My name is Kevin Skogland. I'm from Citizens for Better Elections. I am a cybersecurity consultant, and I'm a voting machine junkie. Probably know more about voting machines than is healthy. Those kind of intersect. I'm also on the EAC's Advisory Working Group, setting the security standards for the next generation of voting machines. I'm here today to strongly encourage you to vote no on this contract. I don't want you to have the same buyer's remorse that Philadelphia has. The, the, the voting machines, well, first, I pass this out, this is our notes, I took a look at the finance video last, last night and saw the questions that you're asking, and I saw a lot of people sort of asking questions, struggling to understand the nuances of this. It's difficult stuff, it's hard to understand the things, and when you're asking a salesperson, and the salesperson's the one giving you the answers, you can't really be sure if you're getting the straight facts. So, I wrote up a lot of answers to the questions that range from how much money you can expect to get from the Governor Wolf's budget, all the way to the weight of the voting machines, things that came up in that conversation. So, I'm hoping that's helpful. But I don't want to go over all of that now. What I want to talk about instead is this particular machine. I divide voting machines into three categories. There are machines that I recommend, and that's the same thing that experts recommend, that's hand-marked paper ballots. There's machines that I don't recommend, and that's touchscreens for all voters, and that's because you're putting a layer of technology between a voter and their vote, and there's consequences to that. And then there's a third category, which is machines that I think you should avoid, and the Express Vote XL falls in that category. And I want to talk about why. The, there are a number of reasons, and I think you've been given some documentation tonight that sort of lists a lot of those reasons, but I want to focus on two in particular that are unique to this system. One is that with the Express Vote XL, you're locked in to this four-inch ballot with barcodes on it, right? That's, that's going to be the ballot. But the problem is that absentee ballots look like this. This is an ESNS ballot. And emergency paper ballots look like this. And if HR1 and other legislation in Pennsylvania, or the, in the US Senate, if that passes and requires paper ballots, they're going to look like this. This is the only voting system that cannot scan this. Every other choice, every other one, even the ones made by ESNS, can scan a full-size paper ballot. This is the only system that can only scan a four-inch ballot. Now, this is a map of the counties and what they've been selecting. All of the ones that are in green have, either already have paper ballots, or have selected systems with paper ballots. The ones that are in red there are ones that have picked touchscreens, but they picked touchscreens with a separate scanner, the system that ESNS didn't show you, right? The other express vote in many cases, or from other vendors. They can still scan this ballot. So, Berks is going with touchscreens, but they can still scan this. Philadelphia, their, their system's not going to get bought, they're going to have to pick over again, but had it gone through, they would be locked into this, and they would not be able to scan these. And that has a couple of important consequences, because absentee ballots are precinct-counted, and at the end of the night, they have to count those by hand, right? All the other counties, they're just going to run these through their scanner, but you're going to be stuck hand-counting them. Now, I know that there's talk about buying a central scanner, it's $50,000 central scanner to do your absentee ballots. It's a pretty big change from the way you've done things in the past, you should consider. You don't need it for risk-limiting audits, so that's not necessary. Sorry, lost my train of thought. So, with a, with no-excuse absentee voting, which seems likely to pass in Harrisburg, it's going to explode the number of these absentee ballots, and so you're going to have to deal with this, and you're going to have tired election workers at the end of the night having to hand-count these ballots. The other thing is, people have mentioned potential legislation and, and emergency paper ballots. If machines fail, if they can't mark, you can't make a barcode by yourself, you have to have the machine to do it, right? So, emergency paper ballots, you would do this, and then you don't have a way to scan them. And then the second thing I want to point out about these machines is that they have this flaw that people have mentioned already, that it, we call it the opportunity to mark flaw. Basically, you take this ballot, you insert it in the side of the machine, it scrolls backwards, you make your selections on the touchscreen, and it prints, and then it scrolls back forward for you to review it. You look, you decide if you're happy with it, you say cast, it then goes backward, and it passes that printer again on its way to scanning the barcodes. So, you can see why security experts are concerned that there's the potential of either adding a barcode, altering a barcode, or invalidating a barcode, or just printing black over the whole ballot, right? The whole ballot could just be turned black. So, it's a serious concern, and several states are looking at it. New York and Pennsylvania are examining this issue, and, you know, we don't know what they're going to do, but there is a risk that this machine could be decertified as a result. This is a serious flaw. So, you should go into that knowing that, and if you insist on buying it, then you might want to ask for provision in the contract that says if it gets decertified, that ESNS will refund your money and let you buy something else. I think you, you need to slow down. I think tonight is not the night to make this vote. I think you have more homework to do. I'm happy to answer questions about a lot of this stuff. I think, you know, this is a democracy that we're talking about, and I think while it's nice that if we could make a decision and tell people about it at the primary and educate them, it's a nice thought, but it shouldn't drive a multimillion-dollar decision, right? We should take our time and do this right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on any topic? Seeing no one at this time. Now, we were going to have a report by Jennifer Massaro from Penn State Extension. I don't know, do you want to do your report tonight, or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
Can I?
If you wanted, no, I'm giving you the option because it's, it's a big agenda, and you certainly are on the agenda, you certainly can, I just thought, I was giving you the option. Our heads are filled, so.
Oh, thank you. I'll be brief, I promise. So, thank you so much for having me, I appreciate the time, and just thank you to your continued support for Penn State Extension and the farmers in North Hampton County. Can you hear me? Yeah. So, first and foremost, the one thing we're really combating right now is spotted lanternfly. So, they will be hatching in a few weeks, you'll start to see the nymphs, they're black with little white spots. So, we've been doing a lot of outreach and education during these downtimes while they overwinter as egg masses. We're going to be holding more public meetings, we're getting together with the homeowners' associations to inform them on what they can do around their homes as well, and to teach their residents. We recently partnered with the Conservation District to hold a tree banding workshop for residents. We are, well, beginning May 1st, the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture is going We are, well, beginning May 1st, the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture is going to start enforcing the spotted lanternfly permit for businesses. So every business within the quarantine zone, and the whole county here is in the quarantine zone, they have to have this permit to do business and to, to transport goods. Anyone who's transporting goods within the county has to have this permit. So we have the training available online on our extension website. And you, it's a Train the Trainer program. So you designate one person in your business to take our training, they take a test, they pass, they get tags that they can put on any vehicle that is transporting goods, and they are then charged to go out to their employees and train them on, on what to look for for spotted lanternfly. So beginning May 1st, PDA will be enforcing that and fining anybody that they see that does not have any of those tags. We are, we recently held a pesticide applicator short course. It was a five-day workshop training individuals who are looking to get their pesticide applicators licensed. We have some upcoming workshops. We don't have the dates yet, but as soon as we get them, I can let you know. We're doing a pest identification workshop and a landscape update. We are holding another Open Gate Farm Tour this fall. The dates are going to be October 5th and 6th. And again, thanks to the community and economic development, they are going to be providing us with another charter bus to take residents and their families out to the farms who otherwise maybe wouldn't have an opportunity to go and visit a farm and see what it's all about. So we're excited to do that again. We are continuing our parasite resistance projects with the equine program to participating farms in Northampton County. And we are partnering with several veterinarians to do reduced-rate blood testing for tick-borne diseases that we've seen a spike in, and that includes anaplasmosis and Lyme's disease. And we have a new horticulture educator in our office. Her name is Crystal Snyder. She is very knowledgeable on industrial hemp, and she has experience growing it at Delvaux. We've been getting a lot of calls from farmers and residents in the area about it, so we're really thankful that she's here to help us answer those calls because she really has the experience. She is working on an industrial hemp plan for farmers, and that includes anything from seeding, planting, transplanting, through to harvest with an emphasis on what fertilizers that they can use for that crop. And she's been visiting with greenhouses in Northampton County to introduce herself and get the needs of what they need and what we need to be addressing. And we have a new 4-H educator who's going to be starting. Her name is Amy. She's going to be starting May 7th. And I would like to have our new Master Gardener, Master Watershed Coordinator, Brad Kunsman, come up and just introduce himself in his new role. You might recognize him as our, our previous 4-H educator, who did great work for many years. And he's going to give you a brief update on our Master Gardener, Master Watershed Stewart program.
You could reintroduce yourself then again, please.
Thank you, Jen. My name's Brad Kunsman. I'm an Extension educator with Penn State Extension in Northampton and Lehigh Counties. And I want to thank you again for inviting us here tonight. Going to inform you a little bit about the Master Gardener and Master Watershed Stewart programs, because they make up one of the largest outreach components of the Extension Service in addition to the 4-H program. It's going to be a quick overview of how the program operates, what our volunteers are doing in the Valley today, and our 2018 stats that we hope we can beat for 2019. Being a volunteer-based program, we want to be sure our volunteers have the latest and greatest coming out of the land grant system. In our case, Penn State University and our affiliates across the country. Master Gardeners and Master Watershed Stewards apply a few months before our training kicks off, so we can review their background and skills before they're accepted into the program. Each of the volunteers that are selected have to go through a 40-hour-plus technical training that's provided by university faculty and staff, in many cases, our industry partners and specialists here in the Valley. So we partner with a lot of our local organizations to train these volunteers. After going through the training, volunteers are expected to give back 50 hours before we even give them the official title of Master Gardener or Master Watershed Stewart. They do this through a variety of community projects, things like teaching area residents to be more sustainable, facilitating community gardens, donating produce, boosting pollinator awareness. Check us out on WD-IY coming up next week. Helping answer consumer, for both residents and farmers, questions about soils, weeds, insects, et cetera. Teaching about water conservation practices, installing meadows and buffers on public land, and lately, that spotted lanternfly. They're out and about doing a lot of seminars, workshops, and displays for all different types of organizations. And that's not all. To stay current, annually, our volunteers are expected to attend 10 hours of continuing education training, give back at least 20 hours on an annual basis, and many succeed that by giving us hundreds and hundreds of hours. And did you know that the Penn State Extension Master Watershed Stewart Program was actually founded right here in Northampton and Lehigh Counties? And in the spring of 2018, the program received a Governor's Award for Environmental Excellence. Since the programs start here, it has expanded into more than 16 counties and is growing across the state, thanks to county support like yours. So what have our volunteers been up to here the past couple of months? Lots. They're partnering with the Parks Service, they're partnering with Conservation District, offering different workshops, getting their boots on the ground to help with all these different projects, especially that spotted lanternfly. Pollinator awareness, because without pollinators, none of us would really be eating. So that's pretty important. Help our farmers out and get more pollinators in the air. Garden Hotline, both a public and private service, and many of our county folks are definitely utilizing that service through the Extension Office. Consumer workshops, if some of you may have seen the Spring Garden series, or Workshop for the Gardener. Poison prevention programs that go out into our local school districts. So if you know Mr. Yuck, that's delivered by our Master Gardener volunteers. We're working with CACLV and Lehigh University to help the South Side become a little bit more sustainable, so people start growing their own produce in their backyard. Working with Conservation District and the DEP on heavy metal sampling in the Lehigh River. Assisting area residents, and we're starting a program with housing authorities to reinforce MS-4 requirements. So as you can imagine, our volunteers are quite busy out there in the community. So some quick stats from 2018. We have 114 master gardeners, 65 master watershed stewards, and last year, they volunteered approximately 11,000 hours in the community, which is a value of about $270,000. And they reached 14,264 residents, and that's both youth and adults. And that's reaching them with the latest and greatest in horticulture and water quality practices. So I passed out a bunch of brochures for you to go and dig a little bit deeper into our program area. And those of you in the audience, I have a few more brochures. Thank you all for your support for these programs in the Northampton County community, because we surely couldn't do it without you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. We have the county executive report. Ms. Executive McClure, do you have a report?
A brief one, sir.
Brief?
Yes. As, as brief as it can be. But I, first of all, we, we heard a, a great many opinions tonight in courtesy of the floor, which I deeply respect and, and I'll reserve any of my particular comments to the consideration later of the resolution, if, if I'm recognized. But, and again, deeply, deeply respectful of, of the opinions that were offered, but you're, you're not entitled to your own facts. And what I, what I did read today in the Philadelphia Daily News was that a, two judges of the Court of Common Pleas actually accepted the ESS XL contract, so that there won't be, they won't be rebidding that, that contract. That, that's, that's what Philadelphia County has done. They've bought the ESS XL. So I have some news. Tentatively, we have reached agreement with the RNs and social workers at Greysdale. We could, again, it's tentative. They have to debate amongst themselves and take their vote, but we couldn't be more happy that after seven bargaining sessions with the RNs, which was the most we had with any of our units, we now have eight of nine of our bargaining units under contract. And that is really a testament to the folks who did the negotiating through the year and a testament to our employees.
Well, thank them both for, and I think this is the first contract that went seven years or six years, for the RNs.
No, they had a contract that just recently expired. There was a, the contract before that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Well, thank them. I'm sure in behalf.
Yes.
Once you get there.
If, if they pass it and you, and you ratify it, we couldn't be more thrilled. We, I can't wait for them to get into the health care and get a, get a small raise that they deserve very much. We have discussed last night, P-3. Unfortunately, with the GPA and Krieger have not been able to come to a resolution with respect to taking the seven bridges out of the, the P-3 program. I would, I, I would hasten to call it an impasse at this point. I am deeply concerned that we have 12 bridges that should have been turned over to us by now. We only have seven that are substantially complete and another one that's half-complete. There's another milestone payment due at the end of May, I believe $2.1 million. We do not believe that Krieger will make the number of bridges they're supposed to have made by the time that milestone payment is due. I don't know what the GPA will do with that information, after all, the contract is between the GPA and Krieger. But we continue to work mightily to keep the process going forward, as I believe that it is incumbent upon us to do all we can to make sure the project is a success, but we need partners to do that. We have very little control over the process, and unfortunately, it does not appear that, at least by the time the milestone payment is due, that we will be anywhere near where we should be with bridges. That, that is just a fact. And it does not, look, it, I am not as optimistic as I was the last time we spoke about this, but I'll continue to work toward it. I've pledged to do it. And that's what I can tell you about that tonight. If you have any questions about that, I'll entertain them.
Are there any questions for the county executive on P-3?
So is there any recourse that we might be able to have? Instead of paying this $2.1 million, if they're, if they're not completed, can we pay a portion of it and say, you're not, sorry, you didn't complete this work?
My understanding, our, our interpretation of the contract is no.
So they get their money regardless of whether they deliver their goods?
Well, yes. You know, tip, the common understanding of milestone, you know, if you look in the dictionary.
Yeah, I know what milestone is.
Right, no, right, no.
Got it.
But it's not defined in the contract.
Ooh.
Yeah, no, the contract was written for Krieger. So unfortunately, the way the contract is written, it can be interpreted as if the milestone payment is due, even if the milestones weren't hit.
So that doesn't, that means they don't even necessarily have to complete the project in, in the overall timeline, and we'll still have given them all that money?
Well, at some point, a reasonable, yes. The short answer is yes. But at some point, the GPA acting reasonably will object to that. And I don't know how that, I don't know how that objection would take form. Usually, it's in the form of litigation.
Yeah.
I really don't like, as you know.
But that's the recourse that we have.
I really don't like government by litigation, but that's maybe where that's heading.
And I think counsel, Ms. Ms. Counsel could make its concerns known to the general purpose authority if we get to a point where we see that as an issue.
It's an issue.
It's, it seems like an issue to me.
Well, you go to the GPA.
Or have them come to you.
Or have them come to us again.
After the next meeting.
We did that once before.
Yeah, that went over really well.
I thought it went great. Do you have anything else to?
I have some good news, in addition to the great news about the RNs and social workers, tentative deal we have there. With Teladoc, in 2018 and 2019, we have saved $390,812 in medical expenses through Teladoc. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. McClure. Any questions for the executive? I'm sorry, I should have asked them, please. All right, fine. Okay, now, I just want to mention something before we start. On under new business, number seven, we have the three contracts we're, we're going to be dealing with, or the three resolutions, the consideration of the contract resolutions, Election Systems and Software, the Angle, Hembright, and Point Click Care Technologies. I'm switching places, and I'm putting Point Click first, keep Angle, and Election Systems is going last, in fairness to the folks who would probably be here from Point and Click, because if, last night was any indication, I have a feeling that the, the election discussion could be much more involved than the Point and Click. And I don't want the people sitting here, they don't have to, they don't want to. Okay, so now we'll move on to old business. First order under old business is the public hearing on the ordinance amending the 2019 Northampton County budget. This was introduced by Ms. Vargo Heffner and Mr. McGee at the April 4th, 2019 meeting. Brad, Mr. McGee.
Yep, I'm right there. An ordinance establishing the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Advisory Board. Now, the right one?
That's not the right one.
Okay. So the papers are in order then?
The, okay.
You have.
Yeah. An ordinance amending the 2019 Northampton County budget, Department of Administration, Election Division. This isn't it either. This is it?
Budget.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right.
Okay, thank you. Department of Administration, Election Division, Department of Fiscal Affairs, Balancing of the Budget.
All right, thank you. And we had discussed this.
Sorry about that.
So this is up for discussion now, and we are, we would be voting on the budget amendment, not necessarily, we're parking money, but we're not approving. We're only talking about the money, not the use of it, which is a separate vote.
Right.
Okay, so is there any discussion at this point on this? Mr. Kusak.
One of the speakers asked who was in fact pushing this and moving it as, as quickly as possible. I can tell you who that is. He is Governor Tom Wolf. And he was the one that entered into this agreement with, as a result of a lawsuit. Consequently, he failed to properly fund an expense for a lawsuit that he settled in the budget. So as a result of that, what we have in front of us is a woefully underfunded mandate at this point. So counties are stuck now between a rock and a hard place. We have to replace these, the current system we have, because it is under threat from the governor of decertification. And if that happens, we're in a world of hurt. So as far as the money goes, this is a move we have to make. In fact, this is a move that I wanted to, I wanted to do back in December when we passed this year's budget. So I do favor this amendment because, because of the governor's litigation settlement, the burden has been placed on counties to pay for this. So I will be supporting this as I did back in December.
Thank you, Mr. Kusak. Yes, Ms. Zirinsky.
Yeah, my concern is that this may not be enough budgeted for this. From what I understand, Governor Wolf is funding this over a period of five years, with portions of it being allocated at, within that five-year time. So I just want to make sure that when we do this, that we know exactly what machines we're voting on and that this is the proper allocation of funds.
Well, I mean, you, you realize that we, this can be changed. I mean, as Mr. Kusak was mentioning, if we had voted on this, let's say, at the end of last year and put it in the budget, we would have put an amount in the budget.
Right, we're just earmarking it.
We didn't know then what machines we were going to. Putting this in the budget isn't necessarily saying we are definitely getting that machine or that that is exactly the money we need, whether it's more or less. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I just want to make that clear, too.
Sure.
And this idea that the, this is a woefully underfunded mandate from the state is very annoying, that we have to pay for these in a mandate from the state where the governor is stretching out the payments over five years, but we need to make the payments on time in the first year.
Get used to unfunded mandates from the state and federal government. Are there any more discussions or questions on, not, that's fine, on, on this? Seeing none? Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Heffner?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Hold it, hold it.
Forgive me.
Right, yes.
Hold on, hold on.
It's been a while since I've sat there. Did we have a public comment? It's a public hearing, right?
I believe so.
Did we, did we ask for a public comment? Who are we asking for now?
We asked for it now.
Okay.
Is there a public comment on this?
Oh, my goodness gracious.
I'm sorry.
Is there a public comment on this budget amendment? All right, seeing none, we'll have the vote.
Ms. Vargo Heffner? Yes. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lo? Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other old business to discuss? Seeing none, we'll go to new business. The introduction of an ordinance creating an open space, parks, and recreation advisory board. Ms. Zierinski, would you introduce this?
Do you want me to read the whole now, therefore?
Oh, God, no.
No. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordained and enacted by the North Hampton County Council, 1, 2, 3, A through F, making recommendations to the, G, making recommendations to the county council on rules and regulations that help protect, maintain, and enhance the natural environment. This board will not supersede actions of other authorities, boards, commissions. I continue to exercise all the duties, responsibilities, and obligations of the formerly-named Open Space Advisory Board, as designated in any county ordinance and resolution, including, but not limited to, ordinance 423-2004 and 603-2015. This ordinance was advertised on this day in 2019, and was adopted by the North Hampton County Council on this day of 2019.
Thank you very much. We need a second on this ordinance.
I would actually like to table this. I think we discussed this in our open space meeting, that the intention of this was to not dissolve the Open Space Advisory Council, but to expand it. The language in this is such that it dissolves one and creates another. Is that correct? Go ahead.
Do you want the executive to talk about it?
My understanding is, Mr. Corriere, who is the first assistant solicitor, county solicitor, who has dealt with this issue, I believe that in working with Mr. Spadoni, that particular concern can be answered very quickly, and I don't...
Did we resolve that already, though, before this?
No, but you're just introducing it, right?
Yeah, we're just introducing it.
So, you'll have it resolved before you vote in two weeks.
Okay, and then this will be amended at that time?
I don't, my understanding... The advice I'm receiving is that Mr. Corriere has already accounted for it in the ordinance, but I think Mr. Spadoni, Mr. Corriere should deal with that issue, and then if it's a problem, we can amend it then, or table it then.
All right, let me get back to the, so, thank you, Mr. We have options here. One, since you haven't gotten a second yet to introduce it, there's no need to table it. We just aren't going to discuss it, and we'll wait until next time to introduce it. Two, you could introduce it, we could get a second, and then we could immediately have a vote to table it. I mean, you know, we're not really tabling anything.
So, there's lots of options. My concern is that this is not...
I'm going to let the solicitor explain to you what your options are.
Go ahead. Thanks, Chris.
Let me make a suggestion, I think it's appropriate. It's being introduced.
Okay.
I will render an opinion. It's the holiday, so it won't be till Tuesday or Wednesday next week.
Okay.
And then you can act on it when it's scheduled. It's not appropriate at that point. You could reject it, or you could accept it, or you could table it.
Okay.
But at least you keep moving forward.
Okay, well, we'll move forward, and it's been introduced?
Second. All right, this ordinance has been introduced and seconded, and it will, we all have a public hearing, debate, and possible vote on May 2, 2019 meeting. Next, consideration of personnel request resolutions, Department of Corrections. Mr. McGee, would you please introduce the resolution?
It is hereby resolved by the North Hampton County Council that one full-time position of corrections reentry coordinator, pay grade CS2602B, salary $57,967, be eliminated in the Department of Corrections effective April 18, 2019. It is further, it is hereby further resolved by the North Hampton County Council that one full-time position of corrections reentry case manager, pay grade of CS2301A, salary $47,876, shall be created in the Department of Corrections effective April 18, 2019. So moved.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
We brought this up last night.
Yes, it was discussed at the opportunity. Seeing none, call for the vote, please?
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner is no longer on the phone. Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the consideration of a resolution accepting a donation from the Friends of Gracemont. Mr. Warner, would you?
There's one more.
There's one more.
There's one more separate, it's a separate resolution.
No, go right ahead.
It's not on the agenda, but it's a separate one.
But it's here.
It's, right, it's here, it's not on this agenda.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, it is here. It is hereby resolved by the North Hampton County Council that one full-time position of corrections maintenance worker, pay grade RU1902D, salary $40,410, shall be eliminated in the Department of Corrections effective April 28, 2019. It's hereby further resolved by the North Hampton County Council that one full-time position of corrections maintenance, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning maintenance mechanic, pay grade RU2202B, of the salary of $42,487, shall be created in the Department of Corrections effective April 18, 2019. So moved.
Thank you. All right, I apologize for that. Is there any discussion on this?
We need a second.
I'll second.
No, we don't, it's a resolution.
Oh, okay.
Any discussion, seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, unless somebody says something, I am going to go to consideration of accepting a donation from the Friends of Gracemont without objection or comment. Mr. Warner, would you please take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Friends of Gracemont Foundation voted to purchase a shuffleboard table for approximately $1,000 for the Cracker Barrel room at Gracemont, now therefore be resolved by North Hampton County, and it does hereby accept that donation of a shuffleboard table on behalf of Gracemont, and we move that forward.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Consideration of mental health, early intervention, and developmental programs advisory board bylaws approval resolution.
You skipped one.
Missed one.
One more in between.
The Gracemont, consideration of Gracemont Advisory Board bylaws approval resolution.
Right.
Mr. Warner, would you?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Whereas the Gracemont Advisory Board has recently approved an amendment to its bylaws, and now therefore be it resolved that county council of North Hampton County amended bylaws of the Gracemont Advisory Board are hereby approved this 18th day of April 2019. A true and correct copy of said Gracemont Advisory Board bylaws are attached as Exhibit A.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll go to the mental health, early intervention, developmental programs advisory board bylaws. Would someone introduce this resolution? Ms. Zierinski?
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council, one, the North Hampton County Council hereby approves the Calora Conservation Eastman Project.
No, 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 no. This is the Mental Health Early Intervention and Developmental Programs Advisory Board. When you said, "I'll do it," that's what I was referring to.
We're just flipping through these too quickly tonight, aren't we? It's the two-sided coffee, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved by county council of North Hampton County that the amended bylaws of the Mental Health Early Intervention/Developmental Programs Advisory Board are hereby approved this 18th day of April 2019. A true and correct copy of said Mental Health/Early Intervention/Developmental Programs Advisory Board bylaws is attached as Exhibit A.
Thank you very much, I thank you. Any questions, any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
And Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you very much. Now, we have consideration of the Calora Conservation Eastman Resolution. Ms. Zierinski, something dear to your heart.
Thanks.
Could you please introduce this? No one has any objections.
This is the map of it, just letting you know. You didn't get to see it.
It's a nice map.
It's beautiful property.
It's great.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the North Hampton County Council, one, the North Hampton County Council hereby approves the Calora Conservation Eastman Project. Further, the North Hampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator of the North Hampton County Livable Landscapes Program, or his designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete North Hampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the North Hampton County Council further directs the North Hampton County Executive to appropriate $118,125 of the Open Space Initiative, environmentally sensitive funds as the North Hampton County contribution to the Calora Conservation Eastman Project. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by county council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund for which it was allocated.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by anyone on that, council? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. I don't know how many meetings today. It's going, it's going on me fast. Consideration of Article 13 Contract Resolutions, A, we're going to do the first one, which is, I told you, I jumped.
You did.
Yep, Point and Click. Get to that. Point Click Care Technologies. Mr. McGee, would you introduce the resolution? I'm going to actually ask you to introduce all three, so you can be on top of it.
Thank you.
It's the last one.
It's the very last, very last one.
It's the third one. We're going backwards.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with Point Click Care Technologies for electronic healthcare records software platform. So moved. This was discussed last night in the committee meeting.
Yes, it was. All right, is there any discussion on this? I thought we had an excellent presentation on this. Gracemont's looking forward. All right, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lo? Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
She's not here?
She's...
She's on.
Yes, sorry, I was on mute.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
And Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the resolution on Engle-Hambright and Davies Incorporated. Mr. McGee, do you have that?
Now, therefore, be it res...
No, take your time.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with Engle-Hambright and Davies Incorporated for accident and illness prevention, for accident and illness prevention coordinator risk management services. So moved.
Thank you, thank you. I don't want you to feel rushed, because it can laugh, so. All right, is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Laurie? Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
And Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you very much. All right, now, we're going to go to the, excuse me, Election Systems and Software. Do you have that in front of you?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Would you like the whole resolution read, or just the whereas?
I think the whereas, because we're going to be probably talking.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the North Hampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendations of the county executive as set forth in the attached documents to approve a contract with Election Systems and Software for express vote Excel voting machines, hardware, maintenance, software license, maintenance and support, firmware license, maintenance and support, and a third-party computer hardware.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. McGee. Okay, now, on this one, there's probably going to be a fair amount of discussion. What I would ask council is, wait to be recognized, you know, to discuss this, and if you have any questions for anyone, I would tell the audience that this is a council debate and discussion. Certainly, someone may ask you a question, or may want to get information, and that is their prerogative, but please try not to wait to be recognized. So I'm opening this up now to County Council as a discussion. And someone want to be?
I'll be bold. I'm going to tell you.
Ms. Rinsky?
I, I've listened to everybody here tonight. I have concerns about these machines. Um, I feel like there is more due diligence that we need to do because of how critical it is that we maintain the democracy and the voting in this county. Many of these people I know voted for us, you know? And, um, I've read several, I did a lot of research between yesterday and today about undetectable changes in the barcodes and reports from the Safe Commission meetings in our, in August, and cyber attacks and cybersecurity, and the ballot marking. And I have concerns and reservations such that I don't feel that I want to either vote tonight, and if I do have to vote tonight, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dietz?
Basically, I'd like to, I'm sure politically I'd probably vote the complete opposite she does, but I do agree with the transparency of it, and, um, I think I've heard enough comments on it, and I think quite valid, that I'll be a no vote, and if, if not, you know, I think at a minimum, maybe we should table it to get some more information on it, look at stuff, but, um, if there will be called on a vote, I will be a no vote as well.
Ms. Kuzik?
Um, I did have the opportunity to use this machine and many others. We saw them at the CCAP meeting, uh, in Gettysburg last year. Uh, they were in Harrisburg, uh, last month, uh, and they were in Hershey, uh, back in November, so, uh, I did have the, the opportunity to look at all kinds of systems. For me personally, I've always been biased in favor of a full-face machine, and if it was truly up to me, I'd, we'd still have those lever machines, because those were bulletproof, and they lasted a long time, but, you know, unfortunately, there were people in Florida that couldn't figure out how to vote back in 2000, so that forced us to buy this, uh, the system we have now.
Yeah.
Um, but that's neither here nor there. We have to purchase a new voting system in this county. Now, um, I do agree with some of the concerns that were expressed by the, the members of the audience, and Mr. Dietz, and Ms. Rinsky, um, but at this time, I would feel comfortable, um, knowing that these machines will be used, uh, on May 14th in the state of Delaware for a school board election, that we would wait until after that these machines are actually used, and we get some feedback as to how they've worked in that election, uh, and then we can make our decision based on actual performance and results before we spend, you know, $2.8 million. And I guess my question for Mr. Durtenger of the administration is, does a one-month delay cause any difficulty for the election board, for the administration as part of the process?
Mr. Durtenger?
It would cost us more, as I mentioned yesterday, one of the reasons we were looking at this was, uh, the shipping costs will go up. It is a $20,000 difference. Uh, to that extent, this was, as I mentioned last night, it was used in an election in Warren County, just next door, uh, this past general election. They did have a, a tie ballot, so they went through the extensive, um, audit to make certain that what was barcoded and what was human-readable was in fact correct. It turned out, with the Secretaries of State for both Pennsylvania and New Jersey being there, uh, they found it to have performed 100% accurately. So it, it has been used in elections already in New Jersey, and, um, it has been used successfully.
Excuse, wait, hold on, Mr. Durtenger. Okay. Uh, question, why, why would it be $20,000 more if you wait a few weeks? You just said it would cost one month.
Yeah, they, their, the anticipation of their costs for shipping were expected to be going up by $20,000.
In one month?
Well, it's, in most cases, if there was a 30, if there was a 90-day, uh, estimate given on this, we've been working back and forth on them, on the pricing, and that was one of the elements. If we took them in, uh, in, before the end of May, we saved $20,000.
Mr. Dietz?
So I guess, you know, I, I definitely follow fiscal, and, you know, on the $2.8 million, that's a .7% change.
It is.
You know, and for $20,000, uh, to, to use that as a reason that we have to hurry up and make a decision right now, um, I, I think it is, is not, doesn't carry the weight.
That's, that's, you're wrong, absolutely.
Bob, let me, I just want to ask one, a point of information. Are the people from the computers that were here last night, are they here?
They were unable to. They had other engagements that they could not break.
Okay, I just, I just wondered.
So there was no representative from their whole entire company that could come here?
That is correct. They were, they, we, we made arrangements, and by, by and by, County Council has been very diligent in their committee work, so we made arrangements for them to be here for the committee meeting.
All right, then they were here. Uh, Mr. Warner?
I'm, I'm going to join Ms. Rinsky and Mr. Dietz, and I also agree with, uh, Mr. Kuzik about the, uh, the rationale for maybe waiting to see how this works. I mean, finding out that there was a tie, that the machines worked was important, but also finding out that we're, they'll work better, or will work for us, is very critical. I, I have three concerns. One is that, and it does have to do with the, the quickness and the diligence that's been involved. I've had a problem with, uh, security versus the convenience factor, okay? We're trying to get this done, I've said this, I said this last night, and in all honesty, um, I'm more concerned about the security of the votes, as everyone should be, as more than I am about the convenience of having the machine here and getting it done, and making sure that the bags aren't heavy, and things are being, you know? All those things are, are fine, but in all fairness, um, I think we should take the time, there was a failure to demonstrate the equipment for the election committee when it was asked for that, on March 6th. Did they, did they bring the machine from Lehigh, or not?
They were, to that extent, uh, Mr. Warner, they, the Elections Commission, um, at their meeting, had made very clear that they wanted to see the Vote XL machine and the Clear Ballot machine.
Yes.
I understand afterwards, about a week or so before the meeting that was going to take place, they were asked, one of the members reached out to Clear Ballot, I'm sorry, reached out to ESS, and asked them to bring the other machine.
Okay.
Uh, there was a Midwest snowstorm that kept us from facilitating that to happen. If we're wondering what the cost would be, as I've heard a number of people ask, Lehigh's paying more than we are, so.
Well, I, again, this is about a matter of what we requested, what we've looked at. This council hasn't seen a paper ballot machine from ESS. They've seen the other machine, the XL, so.
Mm-hmm. But the, the-
No, the Election Commission does, and they voted a whopping three to two to decide to go with the XL.
Well, I, I think much as in Northampton County, where the rule of five is supreme, the rule of three, and the Elections Commission is-
Absolutely. No disagreement on there, okay? Question becomes that, uh, there's a, there seems to be a blind eye to be considered with the fact that these machines may have an obsolescence, obsolete factor.
Well, I appreciate your saying that. Um, we did go through the trouble, because you did bring up HR1, uh, last night, we did go through the trouble to call Congressman John Sarbanes' office today, and very clearly the legislation does allow for, and continues to allow for, ballot marking devices as a means of, of voting. It doesn't change any of what Pennsylvania's law or Pennsylvania's recommendations are. So it, in no way does John Sarbanes' legislation affect the XL machine. It allows for it.
Well, in that case, the last part of this is-
And to that extent as well, if I may.
Yes.
I've seen this map a number of times, and I think you all have as well. We took the opportunity to call the different counties and found that many of them, Fayette as one example, has done nothing. I asked, um, the Director of Elections there what they were looking to do. They are not agreeing, they are not in anything. His response to me was simply, "I wish someone would tell me, because we haven't started on this yet." So to see them in the green mark, facilitate, and we just, that was just an arbitrary pick one. Then we went down and called around the rest of them, and what's represented here is a misrepresentation. It's not the case. There are, uh, a whole slew of these that are ballot marking devices. Mercer County is the ESS ballot marking device. Vanango. Dominion is in a, as a ballot marking device in Crawford. We have ballot marking unison in Susquehanna. There is ballot marking in Montgomery with Dominion again.
And how many, how many counties did, did ESS said they have machines in right now?
They, I believe they have four in Northham, in, uh, Pennsylvania.
But they're not all XL, right?
The, the, the four that are XL, I was not counting, for the ESS other machines, and they have ballot marking devices, as those who've seen the other ones at CCAP. Um, ESS has two versions of the ballot marking device, one's the paginated, one vote, one race at a time, that you pick, and then it does the, it has the same four-and-a-half-inch card that goes on the end, so that's nothing different.
While the expediency of trying to get this done tonight worries me.
Well, it's, I, to, to that extent, and I appreciate that, every one of the members have been invited for, um, a crash course on elections machines. And at the time that they were given, for those who did come, over the last many months, this is nothing that is being sprung on anyone here. This has been going on for many, many months. Uh, the administration looked at and went to the different shows, saw what was there. We had made an early recommendation. Amy Cozy came on staff, and rather than sticking with just what was there, she went and meticulously, line by line, checked with these folks to make sure that we were getting what we were being told we were getting. In some of these cases, we, you know, we can have 12 people vote all at once, but we have to have privacy screens for 12 people to vote, and we need the room and the space at the polling places for 12 people to vote, and then we have to set up privacy screens. So we looked at this from every level, we asked everyone, once we put together the list of what it would cost, we had, as those who came in to see, we had all five machines identified as to what the cost would be, what the materials would be, and what our 10-year outlay would be, so that everyone knew that was given this information, that, what that would be. The Elections Commission chose to only look at two of them, so we reduced all of that information down to just the two, since they were only interested in the two. That PowerPoint has been given to everyone to give them a sense of where everyone else was. The vast majority of the judges of elections made their way to the, um, show over in Lehigh.
Lehigh County.
And, and their responses back to us were overwhelming, and they were that night for those who attended the meeting, and, and you know very well that they were. So this is not a matter of expediency, this is not something that's being rushed. This has been going on for months now, and hundreds of hours have been expended to balance out what the costs are, what the first-year cost is, and then what our moving-forward costs are.
Well, I'm, I'm, I appreciate your comments. Um, the fact, I still hold to the facts that, I was disappointed that if you're going to get a $3 million contract, and you have a snowstorm, that you, in, in my business world, you would crawl through a mud pit over snakes to get something there for $3 million. Just my opinion, okay? But the fact is, I'm, as you well know, I made my comments and my, my narrative the other night. I will vote no against this if it is to be voted on this evening, unless it's moved one month ahead, and I will join Mr. Dietz and Ms. Rinsky in that vote.
Well, I mean, before you leave, uh, there's a couple more questions. I'm going to go to Ms. Ferraro.
No, I, I, no, I don't have any questions there, Mr. Durtenger. I just wanted to make a, I just wanted to make some comments, so go ahead.
Can I go to, all right, you have a question for Ms. Durtenger?
So, my, my concern, I understand fiscal responsibility, and that is important, but my concern is that when you look up cybersecurity, and you look up these ESS XL machines, everything points to the fact that they can be breached, even though you've told us that they cannot. The Safe Commission, I have the basic security requirements for voting systems here written by Winky Lee, Ph.D., Secure, Accessible, and Fair Elections Commission, and he says, "The most critical cybersecurity risk in a voting system is that votes are not counted accurately as a result of cyber attacks. Therefore, a voting system must be strong, software-independent. An undetected change or error in software cannot cause an undetectable change or error in, in election outcome. A detected change or error due to poor software performance or cyber attacks can be corrected, cannot be corrected without rerunning the election." Furthermore, he says that, "In order to support risk limited, limited auditing, paper ballots must be easily and clearly readable and manually countable. A paper ballot must show each and every vote exactly, and the best approach is to require the voters to hand-mark paper ballots that are then scanned and tallied by cyber system, but are also dropped into a safe box." Furthermore, at the 2018 Georgia Tech Cybersecurity Summit, Mr. Michael Morel, former acting director of the CIA, told the audience that "Our failures to imagine how our adversaries would attack us have been our biggest and most devastating failures as a nation. Therefore, we must take the threat of cyber attacks against voting systems very seriously, even though there is not yet proof that past cyber attacks, attacks has affected any election outcome in the United States." I think that we have to take this seriously, and just because you tell me that they're unhackable, and because the vendor tells me that they're unhackable, I think that anything electronic can be hacked. Anything that is not software-independent, anything that is not a handwritten ballot that is verifiable and then put into that safety box. And I understand that that is an unpopular opinion here, but I cannot wrap my head around a, any other way.
I, I appreciate that, and I, and I certainly, this, this question has come up very many times, and the answer from our own IT company, um, was that, one, they're air-gapped, they're not connected to anything. It's very hard, if not impossible, to hack something that's not connected to anything. It is completely standalone. But taking that out of the equation, all of the systems have the same sort of tallying software. There is no difference, when we get down to tallying, how you read a barcode, or how you read a dot. It's scanning at the end result. The only difference was, and one of the things that was compelling to the Elections Commission, and those who voted for it, is, one, there is no voter intent. Somewhere along the line, someone will not have to decide whether you circled in the, enough, or if you crossed this out, and you circled this one, or how you meant to vote. That is simply not going to be a human discussion, because it is done on the full face. Secondly, you can undervote or overvote, and just as Ben said, everyone, irrespective if you're circling, filling in circles and sliding it in, or you're doing this, you only get three shots. That's a state law, that's not a, that's not an ESS thing, that's not a, a unison thing. You only get three shots, because they don't want people holding up the ballot, and what they've shown already is this has not been a problem anywhere, and they mentioned that last night. But with it being separated, it's still a scanner, irrespective if you're walking over there and holding it in, and to the very many judges of elections that had their own concerns, or one of them would be simply that a husband and wife go to vote. Right now, you're in two different machines on the Sequoia that we have today. You can argue about who you're voting for all day long. You can lie to your spouse about who you're voting for, but when you get in that room, when you get in that booth, you will only be the person who knows. While you're standing online with your spouse to go, go to hand it in, or even on your way walking over, and your spouse says, "I see you voted for that person." Now, they talked about clear ballots is when we can have folders, that you can stand there and you can put your vote folder and walk it back and, back and forth across. Same problem occurs. So the reality is-
Well, I'm not going to say clear ballot is the choice either.
The reality is, with the clear ballot, you're handling the ballots after the election. With the, or any of the other ballot, hand-marked devices, you're handling those ballots after the election. They either go into a hopper, they go into a bag, this goes into a sealed unit that is carried, there is a chain of evidence that is sealed. Nobody's coming in contact with these ballots. So as we're talking about the, and as we're talking about the, well, what could happen, what the, the what-ifs, well, what if, as we're driving down here, somebody decides to fill in the unelected, they were supposed to vote for-
But that's a concern of these voting systems, that, that they can change it.
You can only do that on the hand-marked ballots, you cannot do that on one of these.
Not according to the-
Not according to someone who's writing in favor of hand-marked ballots.
The Safe Commission on elections.
The Safe, these commissions, we have, the, in Pennsylvania, U-Pit had an extensive study to decide what was going to be done here, and a number of the things that have been brought up in the past are things that happened before Pennsylvania decided on what kind of voting systems they would have. Everything that doesn't take into account the Blue Ribbon Panel from U-Pit's discussion and recommendations doesn't, doesn't properly look at the situation as it stands today, not as it stood before, with the voting machines we have today. The risk-limiting audit afterwards, as we keep saying, oh, it could be changed. Well, if we're, they're doing risk-limiting audits, we will see that there was a change. There is no voting system, and to that extent, ESS is a 40-year voting company. Their reputation for voting systems is their, their bread and butter. So they're not going to want to have risk-limiting audits that fail. And they weren't planning on having a risk-limiting audit in Warren County this past two months ago, with the Secretaries of States of two different states.
But they also make another machine that we didn't really get to see or vote on, that is paper ballots, that Lehigh, that-
The Elections Commission did not ask for that, a single member asked for it later afterwards. That's not, if, if County Council was going to have a discussion about something, and County Council had voted to say, "Bring this here," and then a member said, "Well, I'd also like to see this," and told the vendor, and nobody else, that I want this to happen.
I hear you.
How does that work here? Is that something that you guys allow? It was not allowed, the, the Chair was not aware that this was happening when it didn't take place, and the vendor, although making an attempt, everyone has had their FedEx package.
Now, you've answered the question.
I hear you. I want to hear from Deb Hunter again, from the Commission, if that's possible.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, everybody, hold on. Uh, Deb, uh, since you were asked a question, you're going to get a chance, but before I do that, I want to find out, is this specific to the, what you're asking him right now? You'd like Deb to address.
I would like Deb to address it. I'd like to know why the, the election-
Because it looks like there may be more questions for Mr. Durtenger.
I'm sure there are. I'd like to know why they passed over the paper ballot.
Ms. Hunter, you're being asked a question. You're welcome to come up, uh, to the podium. Did you want to ask a question? You want to make a statement?
I just wanted to basically make a statement, and I've just been impressed by the credentials, and now I'm sort of, I'm leaning toward this, okay, let's slow down a little bit, wait a month, see how it goes, and, and, and move on, because I've known Ms. Hunter forever, and, uh, I know what, how diligently she does her research, and so I would like to hear more from her, too.
I, I haven't known her as long as forever, but I've known her myself, so-
My neighbor.
She's your neighbor.
Tara, since you've mentioned, would you please, so we can keep it a smooth direction, what specifically is it you'd like her to address? Not, I don't, not to say general, what would you like her to address?
Okay, so, so first, you mentioned that clear ballot is $1.2 million less than you-
Well, no, it's, it would be $1.2 million, that would be the price.
Well, I want to know why you're saying that, and the administration is shaking their heads no.
Because they are not reflecting, as I have here, a December 19th, 2018 proposal that gave a discount of $455,000 off the original $1.9 million. Uh, and then what I'm doing is, I'm subtracting additionally the state money that was given for whatever system is picked. They're giving $345,000, I believe, that's your number. Is that right?
Correct.
About 345,000? Something like that?
Yeah.
So that brings the initial purchase price there down to, as I calculated it, it brings it down to $1.2 million.
Right, but as Amy Cozy gave us these little things-
I understand that.
She has all these other paper costs and warranty, extra ballot bags, whatever.
Right.
So that brings the total up to $4.8 million, according to this.
But again, you're not taking into consideration the $455,000 discount that they offered with their proposal. That was never put on there.
A $450,000 discount brings it down to like 4.3, 5.
Here's the other thing, if you want to look at that. And it was something I brought up at the Election Commission meeting. If you look at the extras that they have here on clear ballot, just take a look at the privacy screen booth estimates. Look at the range.
$600,000.
Yep, look at the range apiece. Anywhere from $40 to $600 apiece. How can you calculate a number? They took the average, they took the middle, the average. And that's what they calculated it on.
And you don't feel that's accurate?
No.
All right, so she doesn't feel that's accurate?
No, so that's, and that's a $600,000 expenditure.
I just don't want to go over old territory.
$30,000 for Penns.
Because you know how long it was last night. And I do want to address their concerns. And Ms. Hunter certainly has the right to come up and answer. You have the right to ask any questions you want. But we could have long, big, general discussions all night.
So my other question was, why didn't you have the ESS paper ballot? Why did you reject that?
Okay, we didn't reject it, okay? And I'm the single member that Mr. Derniger was talking about. But I did copy everybody. I can't help it if the chairman, I don't know if he didn't see his email or whatever. And I actually looked up the original date that I made communication to ESS to also bring that machine. It was on February 25. Our meeting was March 6. And at the meeting on March 6, the first, one of the first things they said, I said, "Well, why isn't that machine here?" And they said, "Well, you just let us know two days ago that we were supposed to bring it. How are we supposed to..." I said, "No, it was a week and a half ago. That's when the snowstorm thing came up." "Oh, well, I tried, but there was a snowstorm." We also have never had an estimate, again, of all the comparisons that we were given. We were given, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was four comparisons, I believe it was? Four systems?
Five.
Five, okay.
I do remember Amy bringing five to our attention. And she did a lot of work on that, and I appreciated that a lot.
ESS, their paper ballot system with the small BMD, that was never given, that was never asked for. An estimate was never produced.
But the paper ballot from ESS still has a BMD?
Yep, it's one per station. It's the one that Lehigh County is purchasing.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for, I mean, we have two members of the Commission here. And I know I take, well, I'll get into that later. Mr. Dietz has a question.
I guess just basically, anything else that, you know, from what Mr. Derniger was saying that you were disagreeing with?
Well, for one thing, yeah. The ESS XL, it meets the requirements technically of a ballot marking device. And it meets those, but what they're talking about with HR-1, and I'll go back to Lehigh County because this was part of their reasoning why they purchased what they did. And that is with HR-1, which has passed the House now. You know, Mitch McConnell is not even talking about it in the Senate. But that may change at some point. And that's what I'm reading here. And what I read to you here is subtitle F, Section A2A1. And the very last line says, and this does not involve a grandfathered system. This is, no matter what you've got now, it says, "So long as the voter shall have the option to mark his or her ballot by hand." So in other words, when you walk into that, into to vote, and you want to request, I want to mark something by hand, you've got to be able to have that option.
So that's just preparing for the worst. I mean, preparing for the potential of that being passed. That would be the worst case scenario.
You know what? I'm going to have, I'm going to let, unless somebody asks, I actually kept some questions for Ms. Cozy. But while you're standing here, are there any other questions or any information you would like to have from Ms. Hunter?
Yes, Ms. Hunter, I'll keep it in line here. One of the things I liked about this ESS XL machine was the fact that it was secured ballots coming back that were in a lockbox. Do you have, are you, do you have any concerns that the ballots being returned? If we went with the paper thing, do you have any concerns with the way they would be handled afterwards? I saw that as kind of a really place where we could have a lot of problems. And that's kind of why I like that system.
Right, and that's something that, like I said, when we, when I called, I called Berks County, I called Chester County. But Chester and Lancaster in particular, because they've been using paper ballots since, I want to say, 2006. And they're, you know, especially Chester County, they're much bigger than we are. And logistically, they have no problem with it. As far as security goes, it's put in a locked bag kind of thing. And by the way, the weight of the bag, we addressed that as well. It goes into a bin. The ballots go into a bin that is secured, okay? And then my understanding is that they're, that bin is secured. And somebody from, just like you would have us wheeling in the big machines that we have now, the same people that do that for the county now would be handling those big bags of, big bins of ballots. Okay, because that was one of the concerns of the judges of elections, that they would not be able to-
They're shaking their heads no again.
What's that?
They're shaking their heads no again.
But, you know what? We, we'll get to that. Mr. Lott has the floor.
Yeah, I just, when it was shown to me, I saw that as a major problem with the way those ballots could be handled afterwards. And I thought this was a much more secure way to handle those ballots. And that's, that's one of the things that I really liked about this machine. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions at this time for Mr. McGee?
Since you're on Election Committee, mismarking a paper ballot, does you or your group have a problem with the mismarking? Or, I mean, I know you're in support of it, but I saw that as a problem where people don't get it right, and then they get voided.
Oh, are you talking about if they go outside the bubble? Are you talking about like if they go outside of the bubble?
Absolutely.
They're actually pretty, from what we were shown, they read, like, it's not like, for example, when I give my final exams, I use the, you know, the Scantron sheets. These take any kinds of pens. And they really are very forgiving as far as, because they go through the opti-scanner, they're digitally scanned.
But I see that for room is there, too. So I mean, there is a little bit of-
Well, if there's an overvote or an undervote, it kicks it out.
Okay, and what happens when it kicks it out?
When it kicks it out? No, 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 no. They tell you, they board your ballot, you get that ballot, and then you go, and what I would hope is, like, if it was me setting up this election station, let's just say, I would have a small separate table over here for anybody who, if their ballot is kicked out, they go here so that all the other people who are filling out their ballots and just, you know, coming up to the scanner and zipping it through, they've got-
You get the three chances, like we do on the other one.
Well, that's, you know, according to law, you get the three chances. But, yeah, they've had a separate table, so they're not interfering with the line. That was something that the judges of elections were saying, "Oh, well, then they got to go back." You know what I mean? Like, they're going to stand up, they're going to hold up the line, they're going to take up a place where somebody else is voting. You could set up a separate, small table for the people who's either undervoted or overvoted. They get set here, everybody else just keeps coming through. Again, something that they all said, all of them were in agreement, much faster.
And the other thing that I had an issue with is the confusion of, you know, people filling it out, having it, holding it. You know, it just seemed more like a smoother process, okay?
I think you're talking about the two-step.
I'm talking about the ESS machine.
Yeah, I mean, again, you're-
It seems like a smoother process. And also, a recount issue, you know, with the paper versus a recount with the card.
Well, it also goes into a digital scanner.
Okay.
Okay, that takes a picture of it.
Hand-fed each one at a time, or are they multi?
No, they take a picture of it. They could bring it up at any time. If you come, like, the March 6 meeting, they had, Clear Ballot had there, where they can show you every single mark that was made, et cetera, et cetera, that it was taken. So-
Are there, is there anything else for Ms. Hunter? So I'll ask you a question. When you, on the Commission, you saw the demonstration of two machines?
That's it.
Right. Well, I mean, I've seen lots of them. Because I went down to Bucks County myself to see a number of the machines. I saw Unison down there. I think Hart was down there at the time. Yeah.
Because I mean, Mr. Cusick brought this up. And I think there was somewhat of a perception, maybe by some, that this was, we just heard about it. I was down when Mr. Cusick mentions, and I saw various machines. I forget how many. And we took steps through each of them. So, I mean, we have been doing homework for the last year and a half on voting machines. And I think we've been talking about them for about that long, too. In your mind, though, and this is just a question, I don't know if it's accurate enough or fair enough, but the two machines, systems that were presented to the Election Commission, did you consider them the two best of all the machines you were aware of?
The reason, the reason that clear ballot was on there was because after we looked at the compiled comments of the judges of elections that had gone to the Lehigh County facility, we were looking at ones that they showed some preference for. ESS XL was preferred because it's what they're most, it's like what they're most used to. And I get that, right? People are afraid of change. But the second, as far as positive comments, was clear ballot. And the reason then that I invited ESS to come with their paper ballots a week and a half before was because by that time, Lehigh County then had voted to go with the ESS paper ballots. And also, because I went back and I looked at the comments, and also, ESS, their paper ballot system with the BMD, the single BMD for ADA compliance, that also, that household had some positive comments. So I said, "Okay, let's get them here." And again, they didn't bring them.
So is the only reason why we're not considering the ESS machine with the paper ballots because they didn't bring it because of the snowstorm? That's the only reason?
Well, you're at, she's, that's, she's saying, I don't know if she knows for sure. She's saying, "I don't know."
To tell you how that went on March 6, and, you know, Mr. Werner was there, basically, we were supposed to have a workshop meeting two days before that meeting, okay? I was informed, and I'm assuming the rest of the Election Commission was informed, "Oh, by the way, we're having a special meeting, official meeting, right after that meeting." And then, of course, that evolved into, "Oh, we're going to take a vote tonight."
So this process was rushed at that time? So these are the two that we get to pick from because that one was excluded from the get-go?
Well, I mean, you don't get to pick from them. They're recommending one machine. You can go back and look at all of them if you want.
I mean, and that's the thing. I think it has to be clear. We've talked about this and it's been discussed before. I mean, obviously, we end up, as in many cases at county government, we're paying. We vote to pay the bill.
Right.
But in order, and people spoke about the sanctity of elections, and I couldn't agree more. I mean, especially today, people don't seem to believe but that there is much sanctity. And we all want it to be secure. I think it doesn't matter what machine you're for or against. I mean, nobody's sitting up here saying, "I think if I take this machine, somehow I can skew it so I get a landslide." I mean, I don't think that's at our level, or anybody else for that matter. But I guess the, I don't know. We have the Election Commission to make this. And it was a three-to-two vote. Mr. Werner, I agree, it was three-to-two. And I know the judges of elections had a preference. I was told to go with this machine. I guess I'm, as a councilman, I have my preference, and it is for the machine they're pushing because I did try the different machines. But having said that, I hate to, I just don't know about going against the election commit, you know, it's like our vote. Let's say we had a five-to-four vote. Now, the executive could veto it. Let's say it was six-to-three then. I'm sure he would go on forever saying what a terrible vote it was, and we did the wrong thing. But that's it. That's the vote. So I'm, your body is set up just so there is that insulation. We don't, we're not picking out the machines.
And you folks are going to be the ones that are going to be seen by the public as spending the money.
And you're right. And that's, in every way, shape, and form, we're spending money here, there, and everywhere. But no, I'm just saying, I just want to-
I understand, but what you're saying is that if we go against his vote, we're going against him-
Who's vote?
Or, you know, or the Election Commission, right? We go against their vote. But if we don't make the right choice and support the right machine, we're going against all the voters if this goes awry. We have to pick the right machine.
If we don't pass a decent budget, we're going against all the citizens. I mean, I'm not debating-
Well, yeah, but these are the important votes that we have.
They're right, it is an important vote. Every vote we make is an important vote.
So I would think, I would think that we should-
And this is a very important vote.
Push this off. Can I make a motion to take it?
Well, I'd like to, let's have some, I mean, it's up to you. But I think there's some questions and discussion. I mean, you can make any motion you want. I don't know if you'll get the votes to table it now because I think there's some people that still have some questions. Maybe you will later on, I don't know. But it's your decision.
I'll hold back if anybody has any more questions.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. McGee, do you have something for, because I'm going to let her sit down.
The map that was introduced to us, you did not introduce this map to us. So I just would like some clarification on the map, a little bit more.
I can't give you clarification, it's not my map.
I don't know who made the map, or, you know, because there were some flaws in it, maybe.
Yeah, it's not from her.
All right, there's a gentleman in the audience.
The gentleman right there in the blue.
Kevin.
Yep, can I sit down?
Yes, please, sit down. I'm sorry, you could have sat, I mean, I'm trying to get you down, Ms. Hunter. I was trying to get you down there. Do you want to ask the gentleman a question about the map right now, or?
I would just like to know when the map was made and where he got his references from.
If you want to answer the question, please come up. But we're not going to get into a full-blown discussion.
Sure, so when I described the map earlier, what I said was, everything in green are counties that either already have hand-marked paper ballots or that have selected them. So a lot of those counties are currently using hand-marked paper ballots. And I don't know if they will continue to, the presumption in a lot of these counties is that they will because they like the hand-marked systems.
When was the real-time-
That actual map was made yesterday.
No, but what I mean is, like, say, if you pick the county, is it something incumbently that they're already doing now, and then they still have to make the change? Is this before or after change? I mean, there's a lot of missing pieces to the map.
Okay.
Not to pick your map apart, but there is-
No, no, but I can send you another map that shows a split between the green ones, between the ones that are current systems and ones that have selected, if that would be helpful. But basically, right now, what it looks like, the picture for January 2020 is what-
Does this map have the new machines? Are these, like, which counties picked their new machines? Is all of them, or just some of them?
No, no, so I said, some of them are existing paper ballot systems that are the old ones that they must pick again.
That would be helpful if we knew which ones were existing.
So for example, Chester-
Because I assume that they were all the picks, the first pick.
Chester has old machines that can be indicated-
And they must pick again.
I'm sorry?
They must pick again.
They must pick again. And they have said they want to stick with hand-marked.
Thank you. So basically, the map, you can take it for what it's worth. There's some accuracy, some inaccuracies, some, thank you very much. Mr. Cusick?
Just a comment on the map. But some of those, that, I think some, it was clarified, those counties that already have that type of system, those counties that already have the, that type of system, even though they have that type of system, they are also facing decertification. So whether they have it or not, they're, they're in the same boat as we are. So just because we go to a system like that, there's no guarantee that it won't be decertified in the future.
Somebody just bought something, and now they have to replace it, and they only bought it like two years ago. That I found out as well.
I, I have a question for, with Ms. Cozy. Could Ms. Cozy come up?
And it was a paper system.
If that's allowable. Thank you. Because I, I, I went and, like Mr. Cusick and some others, I looked at all these machines last year, and played around with them, and tried them, and heard that, everybody's a salesman who's selling anything, paper or, or machines. So I mean, they're, they're all salesmen. So the thing is, you, though, were the point person, and you were out, and you did go within depth and look at various systems.
Yes. So I've not spent one or two days.
And we've talked about this a lot.
I've spent five months of my life searching for the machines.
Amy, I'm going to give you that chance, because I, I, here's the thing. We've heard people are shaking their heads no when somebody's talking, and they're talking, they're shaking their heads no's. So I get it. That's how things usually work. But we're up here, and we have to make a decision. You looked at every, you looked at the systems out there. You did some work on it. I guess what I'd like to know from you is, what, and you gave a report to us, so I, I don't, sorry if some of this is repetitive, but we have some folks who are here now. What was it about this machine over everything, where you came down to the two, and then this machine that stood out?
So let me just preface it with...
I'll just throw that to you.
I was tasked with researching all of these various systems. I was never once told, we really like this one, do what you can to find all the good things about this machine, and find all the bad things about those machines. Not once did that happen. I was told, find all the bad things about all of the machines. And that is what I set out to do for the last five months. So there, there was no bias coming into this over some certain machine, even though that, that has been relayed. That has not been the case. Also, I'd like to make it clear that convenience is in no way weighted more heavily than the sanctity of our elections. Of course, the integrity of our elections and the security of our elections is paramount to not only county council, our judges of elections, our elections commission, our administration, our county executive. We all care about the sanctity of our elections. We certainly would not be pushing for a machine that we felt in any way could be compromised in any way, whether that's a cyber attack or a voter usability issue. And I would like to point out that in the history of U.S. elections, we cannot pinpoint a, a cyber attack on an election and verify it. However, I would like to talk about hanging chads, missing a senator's race because you have a five-page ballot. These are things that are real issues in elections, and that diminish a voter's voice. There is more to diminishing, diminishing an election than cybersecurity. It's not less important, it's not more important. They are equally important, and they need to be considered equally. So, that being said, I took both of those things into account when examining these systems. Yes, we did look at cybersecurity. Yes, we made sure that all of these systems were secure, that their electronic issues could not, you know, be tampered with. And I would like to mention that one of these paper-based systems, specifically the one that was brought in front of the election commission, per their request, by the way, was not the second most popular system at the Lehigh County Voting Expo. That is not accurate at all. But it was requested to be brought. That system was not certified at that time because the scanner was switching votes. The scanner was switching hand-marked optical votes. So to say that having a hand-marked ballot is going to be more secure electronically than a full-face ballot marking device is also not an accurate statement. Just to be clear on those things. The ESNS paper system, there's a lot of debate about some kind of conspiracy that we didn't have it here for whatever reason. That system was available at the Lehigh County Expo that everyone was invited to, every member of council was invited to, every poll worker was invited to, literally every member of the public was invited to go see all of these systems and make your own decisions on, on what your preference was, what you thought the, the security issues might be. I know that the machines were at CCAP. You had an opportunity to look at them there. There have been several opportunities to examine all of these systems. In no way have we hindered the opportunity for all of these systems to be looked at by everyone. We, we, there was no conspiracy to hide any of this. This was not a, a non-transparent process by any means whatsoever. So I'd like to dispel that as well.
So you're, you're, and I, I'm not going to, your role, your mission was to be put out there, Ms. Cozy, go out and look, review all of these, look, the pluses and the minuses, and we'd like you then to give us your recommendation based on that. That, that's what, and you weren't told to be in favor of anything, or?
Overall, across the board, cybersecurity, voter usability, the, the ability for the poll workers to, to make an, an election function well and efficiently. All of these things were taken into consideration with looking at the various systems. And at the end of the day, the ESNS Express Vote XL system checked all the boxes in a way that no other system was able to check each box. You have to consider more than one thing when saying, what is going to be best for the voters in this county? You have to think about voters being resistant to change. Sure, we want to say, who cares if it's changed? They'll adapt. Well, we need to care, because they pay taxes, and their opinion matters too. And when they go to the polls, they want to not have to worry about learning a new voting system that's going to cause confusion. Right there, we're talking about compromising the integrity of an election, because if you have people who are deterred from voting because they don't want to learn a new system, well, we've just created a new form of voter suppression, and it has nothing to do with cybersecurity. These are things that all needed to be taken into account. Overwhelmingly, the poll workers, the judges of elections, liked the XL because it was so familiar. It was familiar. They knew, they know their voters. They see their voters year after year. They see what goes on in these polling locations, and they know what's going to happen when they show up to a new machine. They knew that when their voters came to vote, it was not going to cause mass chaos in the polling locations. We were going to be able to transition easily to a new voting system while maintaining all of the state certification standards, having a verifiable paper trail as we are required by the state. This system went through a rigorous mandate. I have read all 72 pages of the University of Pittsburgh Blue Rhythm Commission study, and they went point by point. I have an answer from the county to each one of those points, if you're interested. I think I sent them out already, but I will provide them again. We have gone through point by point. The risk-limiting audit is part of the security system, is being able to go back and compare the, the digital printout of the votes and human-readable names on the paper. They're all there. Those paper ballots are the security of our election. They're just as important, whether they're marked by a machine, or they're marked by a human being. At the end of the day, they can still be tabulated by hand, by a human being, and be accurate. So all of these things taken into account, there's a lot of inaccurate information that has come out that I think is irresponsible. I have followed up on every blog post, every article, every research. I have followed up, this map, when it was presented to me, I called every single county in Pennsylvania today to verify the accuracy of this map. And you know what I found? It's not accurate, even remotely. I followed up with all of the, the congressional offices where this legislation was being introduced. I didn't do all of this because I was tasked with a, a goal by the administration. I did this to make sure the Northampton County voters and taxpayers were going to get the best voting system. It's $3 million. It's a lot of money. I don't take that lightly at all. I took this job very, very seriously, and not because I had an end goal in mind, but because I do care about the voters in Northampton County. And I care about the fact that this is a very big decision. It's going to be a very big transition. I wholeheartedly believe that this system will be the best for our poll workers, for our voters, and for our taxpayers.
Now, there were a couple of things that I, I, because I took notes when everybody spoke, and I, I don't want to necessarily belabor, but a, a, a couple of things I wanted to ask you based on your opinions, since you were out there more recently than, than I certainly was, going and looking at these things. The, the idea of hacking, now, I, I, actually, my first stint in school was at Lincoln Tech. I have an electronic technician degree. That being said, I didn't work on computers, but I do, you know, I know a little something about circuits, resistors, capacitors. The administration finds that humorous. Sometimes I find them humorous. It's like Laurie says, I have a long background. Anyway, the question really is this.
Mr. President, the Catholic Church ended before this meeting. I just want you to know.
That's great. That's great, Laurie. Now you have time to go to confession again. All right, so...
I have to run after this meeting. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Hacking. This is, there, there's no Bluetooth capability, so we're not going to get that. I mean, in that sense, you could hack my microwave as easily as you could hack these machines. But I do understand, the question was, because there is a flash drive that is put in, but I understand, and, and we did have some discussion, I'm, I know Ms. Zirinsky brought up, that someone could get a hold of one of these flash drives and go to an individual machine and somehow reprogram it or do something. You've looked at the various machines. Could, could you just address that? And I don't, you don't have to expand.
So the only way for one of these machines to be compromised in, in that sort of way would be for somebody with malicious intent to spend an extended period of time alone with an individual machine. We have gone to lengths to secure our, our warehouse where we keep these machines. We've installed new locks. We installed new security cameras, and we have a total chain of custody that has led us to the most secure possible procedure that we can have. You cannot hack these machines through a network. They're not connected to a network. You have to physically be alone with the machine. It's the only way to compromise these machines. And having the voter verify, or having the auditable paper trail with a human-readable name on it, you, you can do a risk-limiting audit to find if there's any, any...
We, we prefer to hear from Ms. Cozy. I mean, frankly, we've heard a lot from you.
I just, the one element that was missed is, we used to have a terminal at the warehouse. There will no longer be a terminal at the warehouse. So no one will be alone with a computer terminal whatsoever in the warehouse, with computers, where the voting machines will be.
All right.
They won't, even if they got in, they won't have anything to work with.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Derns. You may leave.
I, I wanted to mention the barcode situation one more time.
Yes. I was going to say that that was the other issue that was brought up.
I have copies of all of the ballots for all of the systems. Every single system has a barcode on their ballot. Every single one. This is not singular to the ESNS XL vote. So if you're against barcodes, then we're going to have to find a whole new way of voting.
I just want to make a comment. Sorry.
Here's a quick, let me have this question.
Do paper ballots have barcodes?
Yes.
Who certifies, who gives us the thumbs up on a machine? I'm sure some government agency does.
The federal government does first, the EAC, and then the, the state government also has a very rigorous certification process.
Thank you.
Five, five machines made it through.
Because I'm sure they're a lot more educated than, than I am on the security of these machines.
Yes. You, you and I both, Kevin.
I am the elected official that does believe that some are our security people.
Thank you. Our security people should do their job. I believe they do their job, and I appreciate the work they did. And I appreciate the work you did. I appreciate the committee, the election committee. I appreciate their vote, and, and respect that. Thank you.
And, and let me just say, I mean, there's been some concern. I know all these people on council, some longer than others. We take everything we do seriously, and certainly we take this serious. I mean, we just had an issue where a child died. You all know you've been reading about it. Now, it wasn't Northampton County's fault, but it was a horrific incident, and it was a failure somewhat of a system that we're part of. And I, so, and we're going to have to look at that hard and make decisions as a state and as counties. So, and, and I take that extremely seriously. And I take this extremely seriously. And I think everybody up here does. So whether you agree or disagree with any decisions people make, they're not doing this because we certainly aren't getting any advantage from either any of these companies. That's for darn sure. So I would just like to point that out. I, I just wanted to say that on behalf of, of my, my fellow council members. We, we are, regardless of what it may look like or what it may sound like, we, we do take these things, especially things like this, very seriously. Ms. Zirinsky?
I was just going to say something to that effect, too, that our vote, whether we vote tonight or not, has nothing to do with whether we think that you did your due diligence for the last five months. It's obvious you put a lot of effort and work into it, and that doesn't say whether or not we trust you or not. It says that we also have to do our job, too. We have to make this vote. It's not your vote. It's our vote. We're held responsible for that vote. And I understand that you're giving us a lot of great information, and it's important. But when we have this many people come in calling us for two months, three months, ever since this voting machine came out, we have to make these decisions, and they lie on our backs. So no, nothing against what you've done. I understand that you have done a lot.
There are also 41 poll workers here the night of the election commission meeting that wanted this machine. They're not here tonight, but there's also a lot of people that are in favor of this as well.
Right. But we have to weigh through all this. So it's, it's not, it, it's not like it's a for or against vote. We have to discern this.
Go ahead. No, you have a...
No, I'm just saying, it's, it's not that we don't agree with you or that we disagree. It's that we have to make this vote, and we have to discern what's fact, what's not, and everything else.
Mr. Cusick.
Yeah, as I said earlier, we're, the vote here is whether or not to spend $2.9 million. And I feel strongly that there's another state with three counties that is going to hold an election, and in, in four weeks' time, I would feel very confident, based on how it goes in the state of Delaware, coming back and casting a vote in fa, I, I'm in favor of this machine, but I want some additional peace of mind. And seeing another state use it would, would go a lot further for me. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion to table this.
I'll second that.
All right. Well, there's no discussion. There's no discussion. Please call for the vote on the table. Ms., Mr. Cusick, Ms. Zirinsky, seconded.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
No.
Mr. McGee?
No.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
No.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Farraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Motion passes by a vote of 63.
The...
Five to four.
I mean, fails.
Fails.
Four.
No.
No.
The motion succeeded. Everybody...
Five to four.
Five to four. The motion carried. It is tabled.
Thank you.
I'll be very anxious to hear what happens if Delaware...
Mr. County Executive would like to make a comment. I'm recognizing...
I actually, I thought it was great that council interrogated, and I mean that in the best sense, everybody that wanted to speak tonight. And I, I think, just parenthetically, you are a determiner of credibility. You are. You determine credibility, and that's part of what you're doing. So there's, there's no sort of free lunch on that. But, but I think Mr. Cusick is absolutely right. I think there's another election coming up. We can see how these go. And Mr. Deetz isn't worried about the $20,000. He's not seeking reelection, so it's easy not to worry about money when you're, when you're not seeking reelection. So I actually, I actually think it was, it was well-tabled, and we should also understand where we are vis-à-vis the Home Rule Charter. The Home Rule Charter is a bit inconvenient in, in this regard. The charter establishes the Elections Commission as the body that chooses our elections apparatus. If the founders and the framers of the Home Rule Charter wanted county council to select the voting machines, and, and I have opinions about this myself, because I sat there for a long time, the Home Rule Charter would have had county council sit as the Elections Board. For whatever reason, I guess they felt it would be a more independent option to have a standalone Elections Commission. But the Elections Commission has chosen a voting machine. You have passed the budget amendment, which, by the way, becomes law immediately. So if I were someone who was strictly in the interpretation that I have received from our Solicitor's Office following the Charter, I would go ahead and execute the contract. But because I've been a member of county council, and due respect, Mr. Cusick's, Mr. Cusick's notion that a little more time and another election under the belt of this machine is a good idea, I won't do that before the Delaware election.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess we can't talk about it, because I really wanted to have a couple more...
Well, I had questions as well for Amy, but at, at the table, that's one of the reasons I voted no.
Can I ask the county executive a question?
Ask him a question, if you want.
Yeah.
Is the...
Yes, sir, I mean...
Is, is this going to, anyway, like, were these, these were supposed to be for the primary?
No.
They're not.
No, no, no. We didn't, no. We were not, we were to take delivery after the primary.
Okay. All right. So that's not a problem then. Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
But it's, it's going to make having them ready for the fall a little more difficult, for sure.
I don't know if they were going to do a pilot or...
No.
Does anybody have any other questions for the county executive?
Well, in my rebuttal to the $20,000, I, I do have best interest in, in the county money, which is why I tried to put a cap on the bond interest rate, seconded by your council that you hired that you told them to say no to.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
And I was teasing the councilman, I apologize.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Executive. And, yeah, along those lines, I mean, when the executive said he could go ahead and execute it anyway, we certainly could have a vote, if six, they go against it, we could go to court, and as we all know, law is made by a judge. So, the judge would determine what the, what the charter is or isn't, and this wouldn't be the first time an executive and a county council disagreed, as you know, well-known Mrs. Ferraro, on a point of law or charter. So, are there any, is there any other new business? Mr. McGee?
At the committee meeting last night, I had brought up.
Is this under new business or committee?
Uh, no, this is new business.
Okay, go ahead.
Recovery Revolutions had, last meeting, they came before council, and they had some accusations and some things that I think need to be looked into. Specifically, we had mentioned at the committee meeting yesterday, actually, Mr. Deetz brought up, after I brought it up first, he said, well, maybe, you know, have the controller look into some of the, either the accusations or the way that the RFP is, or the way that the procurement part or the grant with Recovery Revolutions, and I have a memo from Mr. Barron that was emailed to us about a week ago, I think, maybe a little longer. And I looked through it, and there is some things here that, that I quite don't understand, and I would like the county controller to look into it, if, if that's possible, if I had to make a motion for that, and also maybe even to the, you know, to the effect that maybe Mr. Barron could share some of the information that he has in this memo with the controller.
I want the solicitor to make a comment.
Mr. Deetz had a, a comment last night, and I was out all day, but I think there was an opinion letter emailed to Linda this afternoon, and I researched the Home Rule Charter as to who would be responsible in that regard, and it would be the controller.
Okay.
So, and it, it's not a question of discretionary, if you as a councilperson would direct the controller to look into it, he is mandated to look into it and to report back to the council.
So, we don't need a motion on that?
Oh, you, I, I would suggest a motion.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion on that.
I'll second.
And in addition.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, in my motion, I would also like to add the fact that Mr. Barron's memo should be included in the information to the controller, 'cause there might be something in here that he might overlook.
So, your motion is to ask the controller to look into the statements made by Mr. Barron in his memo?
If I could augment that just a little bit, please, that, that they, he would investigate the disbursement, the receipt, and the spending of county money.
Are you, are you.
Yes, yes, yeah, the controller, the, the disbursement, the, the spending and the receipt of the county money, and include any, any information that Mr. Barron can share with the controller.
All right.
That is in a form of a motion.
You have made that motion, is there a second? Mr. Lot, seconds, any discussion, questions? I have a question for Mr. Barron. I read your memo, and I think it was the first or second sentence says, "I was asked." Who asked you to do this?
The first sentence.
The, the email was sent to me, I consulted with the county executive, and I looked into this situation.
You're not gonna disclose who, who sent you the email?
Um, I believe you have all the documentation in there.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff, I just go by your first sentence.
There's an email, there's an email in there.
So, I figure if you were asked, you were asked.
The email, there, there were emails forwarded to me, and I looked into it at the request the administration.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Heffner.
Does there need to be a timeline, or on this request, are we only looking for a year, are we looking back for three years? What are we looking at?
Well, a timely fashion.
No, I'm not asking you to take a year, I'm saying, how far back are we looking at these records? For the one calendar year, one spending year?
Well, this one, but, Mr. Barron.
Some of these emails have some age to them.
The, the contract that was signed by Recovery Revolutions requires that they keep seven years of documentation, so I would leave that up to the controller's office, but you could go back that far, and she, she must have that information, or the company must.
And Laurie, the controller, yeah, he has the right, he can request anything he wants for, wherever he wants.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Deetz.
Well, just that, I, I guess, you know, I, I was also speaking to Sue Wannalowski and Steve Aaron, and, and I had brought up yesterday about this, about looking at the scope of this, because I wanna make sure that it's, you know, as you jumped the gun, that I was gonna say that, that it's under the same respect, which mine would be that we actually, we audit all five of the institutions, so it's not targeted towards one. I, I think that it, it would be, would serve worthwhile to, to compare them all and see where they all lie with it, so.
The five institu, I'm sorry.
The, the five recovery, that the county has contracts with.
Okay.
Pyramid, Bartonsville.
Uh, well, the, the motion that's out there now, had, had, we have it specified for one.
I kinda think we should just look at this first, because there's a lot of accusations in the last meeting, and then, you know, 'cause you look at all five of them at the same time, I just, I mean, I just really wanted to drill down on this, mostly because of the accusations made, like, we were stopping the treatment and we weren't, you know, when I say "we," I mean the county, I mean, you know, we control the purse of the county, but, so, I, I, my, my focus is on this, on this Recovery Revolutions, and, and that's where my motion is.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second for that. Is there any discussion, further discussion on that? Okay, all right, so you're, hold it. All right, so, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Let me say, Ms. Deetz, I'm certainly have no problem with what you wanted to do across the board.
Yeah, so, I'd like to make a, a motion and, and, well, finish drafting it, but the study of all five of the institutions that we have the contracts with and.
And, and with drug and alcohol.
Correct, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, the drug.
And I'll second it.
Well, Mr. Warner seconded it.
Pretty good.
I guess I.
Discussion.
Yeah, well, where's the priority gonna lie here now? That's all, that's all I'm asking, as far as.
Yours comes first.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I would assume that.
It could, so, I mean, if, I'm looking at the five, he could start with that one first and then roll through next one.
Well, and also share this memo information with that one.
Since we made a motion specifically for that one, and then his motion is basically covering the rest, I think the controller's gonna focus on that right now, do it, but then also be doing his. And it's up to the controller, though, I mean, but you're, we've expressed our desire to get that and then move forward. All right.
I don't know what he has on his plate right now either, so.
I can make a point of.
A point of, make whatever you wanna make.
I'm comfortable with what Mr. Deetz is suggesting, I just think we need to have the names, because drug and alcohol gives a lot of contracts for a lot of different reasons, and so I think he should be very specific in the four or the five that he is referring to before we vote on it.
Before we vote on it.
Because Recovery Revolutions gets three pockets of money for three different areas.
Okay.
So, you know, are we looking at the treatment, are we looking at the school, are we looking at the recovery center, you know, so I think he just needs to be specific about the names.
Wait, Mr..
Well, I was specific in my motion, we were looking at.
No, I'm talking about Mr. Deetz.
Mr. Deetz, do you wanna say anymore about, we're still in a discussion phase, you wanna say more about your motion?
Sure. Mr. Barron, can, can you state the names of the facilities that, that we have the outpatient care with?
I don't know the, I, I don't know all the names, and I don't know, like, comparable funding sources, there are five, but I don't know what buckets of money they pulled.
Well, so, in regards to that, what, can you, can you name the, the five facilities that you're?
Not off the top of my head, no.
All right, so, we can, we can vote, Ms. Heffner doesn't wanna vote on that tonight because of that, but that doesn't prevent council from voting on it, and you can, we can get the names later.
So.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? New business? There's no other new business, County Council Committee reports on this wonderful, holy Thursday.
Holy Thursday.
Any committee reports?
We had our committee meeting prior to this one, we voted on, on the Caloro property and on the changing of the Advisory Council. We talked about the ad hoc committee formation, the meeting will be on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. at Louise Moore Park in the farmhouse building.
Thank you, Ms. Zirinsky. Any other committee reports? Mr. McGee, I know you had a committee, did you wanna say anything yesterday?
Um, not really.
Good. Mr. Warner, your finance committee, I know we discussed the machines at length.
Any, any questions? I think we covered most of that, so between that and the.
No report.
I think we're okay.
No reports then, other than that, okay. Council liaison reports. Seeing none. Council clerk?
Nothing.
Nothing? Council solicitor?[1775.41]